Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. The committee just came back from an executive session.
Executive session.
Where we received an update on the tentative agreement with the Boston Teachers Union. Once ratified, we look forward to voting on this agreement.
I think we're hearing one of the interpreters, yeah.
Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, under the March 26th meeting link. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major VPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to offer live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Quebque Variano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. The Zoom interpretation feature has been activated. Zoom participants should click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I want to remind everyone to please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. We'll begin with the approval of minutes. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the March 2020-25 School Committee His School Year 26 Budget Hearing and Meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Pravik. Will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Carrington-Andres? Ms. Lima-Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco-Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
And Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes. Did we lose Ms. Pravik?
The minutes are approved.
Thank you. Before we begin the meeting, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the update shared by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education yesterday regarding the conclusion of the three-year BPS Systemic Improvement Plan. This is good progress. I'm very grateful to Acting Commissioner Johnson, who has supported us throughout this process, as well as the entire team at DESI, for their leadership and continued guidance in ensuring we stay on track. Thank you also to Superintendent Skipper and the BPS team. We understand this is not the end. It's simply a milestone. It's critical that we maintain our momentum, especially at this pivotal moment. We remain dedicated to doing right by our students and continuing to work towards our shared priorities, core of which is ensuring every student in our schools has access to an inspiring and challenging education. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Mary Skipper.
Great. Thank you, Chair, and I will say in advance, my report is a bit lengthy. We have, now that we're moving to by the month, there's a lot to include. So first of all, as Chair said, I am thrilled to begin tonight's meeting with an update on the three-year BPS Systemic Improvement Plan, or what we call the SIP. Yesterday, Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Acting Commissioner Russell Johnston shared that the SIP will conclude at the end of this school year based on data and evidence of improvements across our operations. This announcement reflects the hard work of so many people around our district. It's a major step forward for BPS and a testament to the relentless efforts of our educators, our school leaders, our support staff, and our district leadership. I'm also deeply grateful to our partners at DESI, to Mayor Wu and her team, and to our families for making this progress possible. I'm especially thankful to the members of this school committee. Under your leadership and governance, we've made notable progress over the past three years in key areas that were identified for improvement. We recognize that there's critical work ahead. We remain committed to making continuous improvement across the areas started under the SIP and beyond. And we look forward to your continued partnership in this work. As Acting Commissioner Johnston wrote in his letter to the district, "BPS remains focused on the issues raised in the SIP and has made concerted efforts to build instructional and operational capacity." He expressed that DESI is encouraged with the progress we are making around improved student safety, including enhancements of district-wide safety initiatives, emergency preparedness, and the processes and infrastructure for addressing family concerns. Acting Commissioner Johnston also called out the district's improved transportation services and enhanced hiring practices, which is leading to fewer uncovered routes and more efficient responses to ridership data. We have made notable progress in addressing systemic barriers and have enhanced our operational capacity, maintaining a laser focus on transportation. We are also setting a high bar for transparency and on-time performance in AM, which averaged thus far 94% for the month of March. Through the Zoom platform that we use, we continue to gather insightful data on yellow bus ridership and routing trends that will lead to future increases in on-time performance. As noted by DESI, the district is making progress since the development of the Facilities Condition Assessment and the School Design Study, the foundation for future facilities decision-making. We remain steadfast in our commitment to continuous improvement beyond the SIP with the execution of our long-term facilities plan. We will continue to follow DESI's guidance and maintain our focus on improving outcomes for our students, both our students with disabilities and especially our students with disabilities, and our multilingual learners with and without disabilities through the implementation of the Inclusive Education Plan and increased access to multilingual programming. Additionally, we remain committed and focused on raising the bar academically, both in access and performance for all of our students. And at the secondary level, we're committed to ensuring access to and support for early college and career pathways for every high school student. BPS is a considerably different place today than it was three years ago. We've stabilized our district and we're accelerating forward. Our on-time bus average continues to climb to historic highs. We serve thousands of healthy and fresh meals every day with local ingredients. Our budget is balanced and student-focused. We have filled vacancies with highly qualified and diverse educators. We have expanded our early college and career pathways to serve more than 4,000 high school students, and we are seeing consistent academic growth. I am deeply proud of this district. Not only are we a district that's stable and welcoming for all students, but we're also a district that is growing and striving to better serve our students and families every day. So thank you again to our committee and to all those that helped us be able to make that progress. Now, just a little bit on the summer planning. So while it may still be chilly out with occasional snowflakes, BPS teams have been working to prepare for the warmer months ahead. In partnership with Boston After School &amp; Beyond, we are focused on delivering high-quality, enriching summer experiences for our students. Fifth Quarter Next Level Summer Programming will run from Tuesday, July 8th to Friday, August 8th. Monday of that week, July 7th, will be a PD day. I'm excited to share that we have 9,500 seats at 91 school-based and community-based summer learning academies, 19 high school credit recovery programs, six middle school course recovery programs. Families will be able to register for all fifth quarter programming starting Tuesday, April 1st, the start of our priority registration period. Parents and caregivers are encouraged to visit bostonpublicschools.org/all lowercase summer. There they will find information on a wide variety of fun, quality summer programming available at no cost to our BPS students. On Monday, families received a BPS communication alerting families to the upcoming registration period. We'll share more details in a special summer preview edition of the BPS Beyond the Bell newsletter tomorrow. Communication and enrollment options for all summer programming will be available in the major BPS languages to ensure accessibility to all families. Our expanding Learning Opportunities team is partnering with the BPS Helpline to provide in-person registration support for all families in multiple languages. Cross-departmental teams kicked off our fifth quarter professional development today to build their knowledge of the school mint registration platform and what that process looked like and to make sure that we strengthen their ability to support families. The Helpline, Family Engagement, and Hub School teams are actively working together to ensure every BPS family has a smooth, supportive experience registering for fifth quarter next level summer programming. I'm also excited to share that the BPS Specialized Services Office launched our Extended School Year 2025, or what we call ESY registration today. In the first couple of hours, we already received 431 replies to our form, which has a few options for enrolling. ESY is our summer programming for students with disabilities and provides students with the opportunity to retain skills, build confidence, and prepare for the next school year in a structured, supportive environment. BPS families with ESY in their students' IEP will receive an invitation to register for ESY programming for summer 2025. ESY summer programs provide targeted support to help students maintain and strengthen key skills outlined in their IEP, including individualized learning, academic support, social-emotional development, related services such as counseling, speech, and occupational therapy, pre-vocational and vocational training, and enrichment activities. Participation in ESY can enhance students' confidence, reduce learning gaps, and help them transition more smoothly into the next school year. This year, 4,700 students are eligible for ESY, and we anticipate more than 2,000 participating in the summer programming. Going forward, families will receive weekly reminders to enroll or opt out of ESY, including notifications of newly eligible students. Families may complete enrollment through Parent Square notifications or the FREVO enrollment database, that's F-R-E-V-V-O database, available on our website. We're currently hiring ESY staff, and our team has already begun professional development to ensure high-quality support for students. Training covers key areas such as hiring, scheduling, curriculum, effective communication, IEP implementation, progress reports, and more. Please visit the ESY 2025 website at bostonpublicschools.org/all capital ESY. There you will find important deadlines, open house information, and other valuable information, along with an FAQ section. There will also be open house flyers there and all of our contact information. The BPS team is available to support families throughout the enrollment process, including assistance in multiple languages. For support, contact us at esy@bostonpublicschools.org or call 617-635-8599. We encourage families to enroll as soon as possible to ensure their child has seamless access to services on the first day of ESY. Registration is also going to happen or is happening for Future Boss, the city's summer jobs. This recently opened to youth ages 14 to 18 and young adults ages 19 to 24 living in Boston. There are literally thousands of opportunities to fit any interest at locations across the city. Families and students can learn more at the city's website, boston.gov/futureboss, lowercase. Students and young adults are encouraged to attend the city's annual Youth Jobs and Resource Fair on Saturday, March 29th, from 11 until 3 p.m. at the Reggie Lewis Track and Athletic Center that's on Tremont Street, right next door to Madison Park. The fair is open to young people ages 14 to 24 and will feature job placement opportunities, career development workshops, no-fee bank accounts, free food, raffles, giveaways, games, and more for youth and families. It's actually a wonderful event that I traditionally go to. Just a few bright spots to share out. So this morning, I visited the Dearborn STEM Academy for a special event with Mayor Wu and a special treat, former Red Sox player and Boston legend David Ortiz, better known as Big Poppy, to launch a scholarship for 11th and 12th graders at the Dearborn who are interested in attending the pre-college program at Tufts University. The event also highlighted the mayor's recent announcement of the expansion of advanced math programming with the Calculus Project and Young Peoples Project that she launched at the State of the City. The students were so excited to see our mayor and Big Poppy present a scholarship to Junior Reynell Valerio, who was a student in Dearborn's Engineering Pathway Program. Reynell will take a course at Tufts this summer that aligns with his interests, and this scholarship will continue going forward so that more students will benefit in the future. And Reynell had no idea. He was completely caught by surprise. And it was just wonderful to see his classmates stand up and just really honor him. Thank you to Chair Robinson for attending and to school leader Darlene Macano for hosting a fun morning. I've known Darlene for many years. She's a terrific leader and really, Dearborn is such a wonderful example of what early college and career pathway can look like in a school. March, as you know, is a very busy time at BPS. Over the past month, we've celebrated our outstanding spellers, our inspired artists, our talented musicians, our dedicated readers, our STEM scholars, our women trailblazers, and our hard-working school social workers. Elliott K. 8th School, 8th Grader Schools, or sorry, the Elliott K. 8th School had 8th Grader Sapna Malhotra, who won the Boston Centers for Youth and Families 17th Annual Citywide Spelling Bee by spelling Sanicio correctly. Boston Latin Academy 8th Grada Ruslana Rochin placed second and Winship Elementary School 5th Grada Haley Chen finished in third place in the competition held at the BPL's Copley Branch. I also want to acknowledge BPS Deputy Chief of Staff Youssef Ivali for serving as a judge on the panel. Thank you, Youssef, for that. More than 3,000 young people also participated in Boston Public and Parochial School Spelling Bees to qualify for the BCYF Citywide Bee. 16 of the final 24 contestants attended a BPS school. Sapna was, will represent Boston and BPS at the Scripps National Spelling Bee in Washington, DC in May. We're so proud of you, Sapna, and just congratulations on your many wins. On Saturday, March 8th, I attended the 79th Annual BPS STEM Fair at the Reggie Lewis Center in Roxbury. This was an opportunity for students in school communities to really celebrate STEM education. Participants put their STEM skills into practice by testing hypotheses, designing experiments, and engaging in critical thinking activities. There were more than 100 6th, 7th, and 8th graders and over 70 high school students who qualified and were invited to participate in this year's event representing 12 of our schools. We're just grateful to the more than 100 volunteer judges from industry, higher education, BPS, and the community who volunteered to evaluate the projects and support the event. And a special thank you to Northeastern for sponsoring it. I had a chance to get around to many, many of the tables and talk with our middle school students especially, and it was so impressive and amazing how committed they were to the projects, how much they were able to articulate what they learned and why they chose the project, that there's not any one I could call out, but to just say it was extremely impressive. So thank you also to our, you know, to our science and math departments and technology departments for making that all happen. March also marks the 31st Annual BPS Youth Art Month. You will see stunning works by 300 BPS students that are on display at City Hall and can be viewed by the public during business hours, Monday through Friday until April 11th. Mayor Wu is pictured here greeting our BPS student artists at a special opening event earlier this month. And if you're downtown during business hours, I really would encourage you to just stop by, look at the 2nd, 3rd, 5th, and 8th floors as they just are covered with the fine creative work of our students. March is also National Reading Month, a time when we encourage and highlight reading and literacy activities for all students. Earlier this month, BPS joined the YMCA of Greater Boston to celebrate Read Across America Day with the YMCA of Greater Boston. Mayor Wu was the special guest at the Shaw Taylor Elementary School and Senior Deputy Superintendent of Academics, Dr. Linda Chen, read to our students at the Trotter Elementary School. The Kenny Elementary School Band marched in the annual St. Patrick's Day Parade in South Boston, entertaining the revellers along the parade route. Students at the Harvard Kent Elementary School received a visit from Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley during the Women's History Month. She read a special book highlighting many of the amazing career opportunities for young women in a K-0, K-1 classroom. Students at the East Boston EEC were treated to a presentation and performance by Veronica Robles, who is the founder and executive director of the Veronica Robles Cultural Center and well-known mariachi singer, musician, and Latin American folk dancer and choreographer. And at the Josiah Quincy Elementary School, 5th graders celebrated the month each day with their podcasts, read aloud or zoomed with amazing women who have helped change the path for others. There were many that were included, but Associate Supreme Court Justice Sonia Sante-Meor was there and came into the classroom for students to be able to dialogue with. We also celebrated our school's social workers at their professional development, which was a celebration held at the Boston Teachers Union, and this was part of a national month-long recognition of their field. Really powerful to have the room filled some of my former students in it and just to know the dedication that every one of our social workers has to our students and to our school communities. Thank you to Art Large City Councilor Julia Mejia for joining us and sharing some inspirational words with the BPS team. BPS social workers were also recognized with a resolution at the Boston City Council's weekly meeting on March 12th, which was declared BPS School Social Worker Day. Just really incredibly proud of our social workers for all that they do and their unwavering commitment. Turning to athletics, BPS enjoyed its own March Madness at the annual City League Basketball All-Star Game. This included student players from 18 schools. Congratulations to all of the athletes who made the team. And finally, runners from several BPS schools competed against some of the best athletes in the country at a three-day 2025 New Balance Nationals indoor track and field event in Brighton. Congratulations to Snowden Fenway Dearborn Track members, Rick Barros, Naz Camille, Boston Latin Academy seniors Leanna Lynch, and Demea McClure, an 8th grader, July Rankins. So congratulations to all of our athletes. I know, Chair, that that was a lot, but we have a lot to be proud of and to celebrate in the BPS, so I thank the committee for the extra time.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'll now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee. I'd like to remind my colleagues about our read-upon norm that we each have five minutes per member per round, not including district response. And when there's one minute remaining, I've asked Ms. Pravik to give you a reminder to the members. She will also notify you when your time is concluded. I'd also like to remind BPS staff to please be brief in your responses. Please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Polanco-Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Superintendent, for your report. Me alegra escuchar que vamos a tener, vamos a tener cuatro mil setecientos estudiantes que van a poder aprovechar del, del, del summer camp, del, de, el verano, el verano, para crear buenas memorias a ellos.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you very much, Superintendent, for the report. I am very pleased and very happy to hear that 4,700 students will be participating during the summer, which will bring many good memories for them in that participation.
Yo creo que crearles buenas memorias. Si nosotros nos vamos a nuestras infancias cuando participábamos en campamento de verano, era bien emocionante cuando podíamos tener nuestros campamentos, cuando podíamos tener parte divertida en la escuela.
So it is very fun if we go back to our own childhoods when we participated in this type of summer events. It was very fun, that time being shared in our childhood, thinking about those camps.
Entonces, agradezco mucho esta, esta preocupación y leí, estuve viendo el email que envió Ana Tabarez más temprano a las familias, incluyéndome a mí porque mi hijo va a una de las escuelas de BPS.
And I was able to actually read the email that Ana Tabarez sent earlier because, as a matter of fact, my son goes to a BPS school as well.
Entonces, para, mi hijo tiene 14 años, ya trabajó el verano pasado, y me gustaría saber si que hablaste, habló la superintendente de que íbamos a tener una feria para estos jóvenes. No, no me quedó qué día es y dónde va a ser. Me gustaría que hablara un poquito más de esa feria y qué debe llevar los jóvenes, si van a aplicar ahí mismo para poder tener un empleo de verano.
So based out of the conversation with the Madam Superintendent mentioned that there is going to be a fair for those kids interested in working during the summer. What it was not clear to me is when is it going to take place? Which day? What is it that they have to bring to apply? I wanted to ask that question again because, as a matter of fact, my son did work last summer, so I'm curious about this. When is it going to be? What do they have to bring? What are the requirements to participate in this during the summer?
Yeah, so it is, it's a great question. Thank you, Member Polanco-Garcia. So the Youth Jobs and Resource Fair happens on March 29th, so this coming Saturday. And it's open from 11 to 3. If a student misses that, they actually will have lots of opportunity to enroll through their school as well, through the portal. But that's where we kind of concentrate everyone. And at that, there's just lots of opportunity to see the types of jobs, to see the types of opportunities that they can enroll for. If they're going to work, then, you know, they'll have the opportunity to be able to sign up. And they generally need, you know, ID, which they can use for their school ID, something to prove address. It's a standard form and it's actually online. So if you go to that website that we, which is the slash FutureBoss, it'll say what to bring for the paperwork. But again, students can also do it as part of their school. We've actually had FutureBoss coming to the schools. And so if a document gets forgotten, it's something that somebody can bring with them to school to be able to upload to the portal. They can also do it actually outside of school as well. So lots of opportunity, but it's this Saturday.
Superintendent?
Sure, Anna.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Superintendent. Superintendent has all the facts perfectly. The only thing I would add is that this year, in order The only thing I would add is that this year, in order to mitigate, some of our families sometimes don't have their student ID. Our helpline and we are absolutely available to make sure that we can support families so that doesn't become an obstacle. Thank you, Su.
Thanks. Thank you, Dr. Baris.
Una última pregunta antes que se me acabe mi tu, mi mi tiempo es con relación a la educación extendida.
That one more question before my time elapses. It is regarding the extended education.
Me alegra mucho escuchar que los estudiantes con IP van a poder participar en este programa de educación extendida. Y en ese sentido va mi pregunta.
So I'm very happy and very pleased to hear that those students on individualized education plans, or known as BPS, will be participating in this particular extended education program, and that is where my question is related to.
Van a proveer transportación para estos estudiantes también.
So my question is, will transportation be provided to these students as well?
Yes. Uh yes, we do. Um we go by the IEP and the transportation to the IP. We do corner to corner. Uh so there will be transportation.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Cardet Hernandez.
Super media update, so thank you so much for all of it. I am curious about as we exit the SIP and it's exciting news to, you know, see the recognition for some of the progress that we've made. Uh my understanding is that the um commissioner also mentioned these sort of focus areas that they still want us to stay tuned into, places where we haven't made enough progress. Um opportunities for us to keep doing better by students, particularly students with disabilities and and English language learners. I'm I'm curious how you are thinking about that work and our role sort of within helping still hold a high level of accountability, which I think was the sort of magic of the SIP, um so that we keep that sort of momentum we've seen.
Sure. So I, you know, I think not surprising that the SIP underscored particularly areas that did not all have short-term solution uh or technical solution. Uh so where you see more adaptive work, such as the inclusion plan, uh such as uh continuing investment in multilingual programming uh or a long-term facilities plan, the expectation is that what we've outlined and the years out that we've outlined, that we continue to make steady progress toward those. So there is some already because those plans are out there and formalized. There is uh goalposts for us to continue to work toward. And that will be helpful both to school committee, but it'll also be helpful to us as the district to continue um making sure that we're meeting those, that criteria.
Thank you so much. And I do wonder if it means, and this is for you, Chair, there's something more we want to do just around those areas to make sure we focus on student outcomes and the sort of progress towards improvement here, um maybe in a much more structured way. Since we'll lose the sort of check-ins that we had around the SIP.
Not necessarily so. I mean, I think that we will look at the schedule for next year and look at, I mean, I I don't see us stopping the check-ins. I don't see us, I mean, the work needs to continue for we have a process. We're going to continue all of that. This is, it's not over. It's far from over. So I think we'll be, you know, we will talk with the um superintendent and the staff to figure out what kind of ongoing reporting we still want to do moving forward.
Thank you.
Yeah. Dr. Alkins.
Yeah, I think just continuing that thought, I mean, this is, I've brought this up to multiple members around just my thoughts on members of this committee sort of participating within task forces. And I know we talked about that at our retreat, um so that we can get a more granular look at some of the the things that are more specific to student outcomes in particular. Um and you know, I'm I'm anxious to 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 sort of be placed on a task force so that we can start having those conversations, because I do think it's different when we can get updates from each of us and our individual uh passions or just our our individual um updates in that sense.
Right. Superintendent, you want to respond?
Yeah, that's great. I think the opportunity gap is a great one that we start with, um you know, Dr. Alkins, because I think that really is uh outcome focused uh is at the heart of the work we're trying to do in closing gaps. Um also addresses our special education students, our multilingual learners, in in addition to our Black and Brown students. So I think that's probably one of the most important for us to really um, you know, kind of reboot and make sure uh you know, has good concrete benchmarks for us to be moving toward.
Other comments? I just, I have one question about um the summer. And so, I mean, it looks like, I mean, we have ninety-five hundred slots in the regular summer plus an additional forty-seven hundred slots, you know. So the other question is, are families whose kids qualify for ESY? Are they also, if they don't want to do an ESY program, are they able to sign up for the regular?
Yeah.
Choose something in the regular summer programming?
Yeah, so this is a great question, Chair. This is what we've been working towards. So one of the things that we've done with Fifth Quarter in Boston, After School and Beyond, is to make sure that the uh the community organizations and the nonprofits that are working uh in addition to our sites in that fifth quarter, that they're able to serve a continuum of student need. And so last year, we had a historic high um of our special education students from ESY participating in those fifth quarter. And I would anticipate that our goal, knowing uh Chief Sanchez, is to exceed that this year. So um that is definitely a goal. We want to be able to make sure that our fifth quarter is inclusive um of both special education and our multilingual learners.
Yeah. And for eligibility, does fifth quarter go down as far as our K zero, K one students? Or do you have to be K two and above?
Well, we have a, not so much fifth quarter, but we have a a whole experience for our K zero, K ones uh that we do uh as the little guys. But we, we take care of them quite well in the programming.
I'm sure. Okay. If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
So move.
Thank you. Is there a second? There any question or objection to the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Parvex. Will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mister Cardet Hernandez?
Yes.
Mister Cardet Hernandez? Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mister Tran?
Yes.
Mister O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The superintendent's report is approved.
Thank you. Um we'll now move on to general public comment. Ms. Parvex?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for individuals to address the school committee on school-related issues. Questions on specific school matters are with the committee later. There are two public comment periods. The first is limited to one hour. Anyone who hasn't testified during the first hour will have the opportunity to testify at the end of the meeting. We have six speakers this evening. Each person will have three minutes to speak. And I will remind you when you have thirty seconds remaining, please feel free to email your comments for distribution to the committee. Speakers may not be assigned their time to others. The time that an interpreter uses for English interpretation will not be deducted from a speaker's allotted time. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. Please note, the comments of any public speaker do not represent the Boston Public Schools or the Boston School Committee. Please state your name, affiliation, and where you live before you begin. Please sign into Zoom using the name you registered with for public comment and be ready to unmute and turn on your camera when it's your turn to speak. Please raise your virtual hand when I call your name. And please speak slowly so the interpreter can capture what you're saying. Our six speakers are Cheryl Buckman, Deidre Manning, John Mudd, Robert Jenkins, Mike Heisman, and Ed Burley. Cheryl Buckman?
My name is Cheryl Buckman. I'm a former Dever student, parent to a child at the Dever, resident of SL Boston. I write to you today with a heavy heart and grief and a profound sense of betrayal. The Dever compute, community has been utterly failed by the decisions made regarding our school. Decisions in which both DESI and BPS played a crucial role. We were treated as collateral damage, sacrificed to facilitate the expansion of a neighboring school. I witnessed firsthand the utter devastation from the impact that was etched on the faces of parents, teachers, and students. BPS, you abandoned us, treating our community as if it had no value. Parents, teachers, and community leaders tirelessly rallied, sa- testified at school committee and spoke to the media, pleading with BPS to reconsider the closure. Their voices, our voices, were ignored. You failed the dedicated teachers and vulnerable students who called the Dever home. I had to look into the eyes of my own inner child, the carefree eight-year-old girl who once walked the halls of the Dever and apologized to failing her. I had to tell my son that his own mother could not protect his safe haven, his home. This is unconscionable injustice to the students who will now be scattered across the district, ripped from their familiar environment and support system. Uh the Dever community has a simple request. You already predetermined their fate and closed us. For sixty-eight years, the school was the heartbeat to many. You took that away. The damage that is done is unimaginable. The Dever community is determined and will stand together stronger. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Deidre Manning.
Good evening. My name is Deidre Manning. I'm a single parent to two public school students and I live in Dorchester. I have been advocating for over a year and a half for a meaningful change to be made to the exam school policy that still targets children for exclusion who do not attend Title I schools and who live in a higher socioeconomic tier, excluding the vast majority of them from exam school seats. You may not agree with me that education policy should not exclude certain members of the public from public schools. I am confident, however, that you have not been provided with adequate information to make an informed decision. I do agree that there are many, many problems in the district. The primary one being that elementary school children are not being prepared to succeed in middle school, high school, higher education, and in a career. It does appear that the district is trying to improve by adding more resources to early literacy initiatives. I used to work as an investigator for the Board of Registration and Medicine. Members of the board required memos recommending a cause of action to also include alternate resolutions, including the pros and cons for each. If a board member didn't agree with the recommendation and wished to see more information presented on an alternative, the matter would be presented at a future date with requested information. At school committee, members are presented with a recommended course of action, and there does not seem to be an opportunity provided to members to discuss matters in depth, as just mentioned by Dr. Alkins. I have heard board members request an opportunity to engage on a subject matter and participate in the process resulting in a suggested course of action. That has not happened to my knowledge. I've also heard board members ask for definitive time when questions they have asked would be answered. Almost a year ago, the superintendent stated that the board would be provided with information on exam school admission process. Other than a cursor review of the numbers of applicants and admitted students per tier and the percent receiving admission, there really has been no meaningful information provided about the exam policy construct and students who are being excluded from exam schools. At that time, four areas of interest were identified for possible future analysis that did not include a specific information from member Cardette Hernandez that the district, that, excuse me, the direct allocation of points to students with a financial disadvantage be considered. The district has continued to say that it is not possible for them to do this, despite the fact that I have pointed out another public policy initiative that has done the very same thing. I have also served on a board outside of my professional responsibilities that required a considerable amount of my personal time to be prepared to participate. I understand that public service is sometimes a thankless task. I ask you, school committee members, to support your fellow member in his request for a different approach to allocating so-called bonus points and to demand from the district administrators that you be provided with sufficient information in advance of a vote. Until you re- I, uh, excuse me, so that you can make an informed decision. I might suggest that you withhold your vote until you receive assurances from BPS administrators that they will provide you with the information you need to fulfill your obligations to both the district and all children living in the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Mudd.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, my name is John Mudd. I'm the proud grandparent of a fourth grader at the John F. Kennedy Elementary School and a longtime education advocate in Boston. Uh in the budget hearings, many members of the school committee have said that a focus on student outcomes is the primary goal of the Boston Public Schools. Yet rarely if ever has the committee specifically tied the budget to measures of student outcomes. How is the effectiveness of past expenditures evaluated? How are proposed budgets tied to student outcome goals? This is crucial, but it hasn't been done. It should be, I believe. It could be part of the follow-up to the vote approving this budget. It could be the part of a committee requirement for presenting a program and student outcome budget for for BPS in the future. For example, BPS has proposed a hundred and thirty-three million total all-funds budget supporting English learners. It touts a four million investment, but hasn't explained the overall eight million cut in funding for English learners. There are no student outcomes for this expenditure, no SMART goals, past, present, or future. There is no explanation of why the expenditure will produce positive results. Except for a relatively small positive commitment for about eighty students in new bilingual programs, it continues thousands of students in English-only, English immersion classes with the SL, a strategy that has failed to prepare over ninety percent of multilingual learner students to meet state standards. Stop the inclusion plan continuing to assign ML students to general ed with the SL and demand a long-term plan for significantly expanding bilingual education. These questions about past performance and future goals should be asked for all the major system initiatives. For example, what has happened and will happen with the inclusion of special education students in a total special education budget of over five hundred million dollars? And what about outcomes from equitable learning spending? Or the student outcomes of facilities closures and mergers? You might also ask yourself questions about the effectiveness of this budget process. I and the Multilingual Learners Alliance have raised questions about the budget, but have not received answers. Others have testified about their serious issues, and you have asked many questions and raised concerns. But has anything in the proposed budget changed? If not, what does that mean about the effectiveness of this process? How can you create the possibilities for real give-and-take discussions that have an impact on key budget and other issues? That is something I would
Thank you, Mister Mann.
Try to
Your time is up.
Determine. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Robert Jenkins.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Good evening, uh, School Committee Chair Robinson and Superintendent Skip and all School Committee members. I am speaking tonight because of the Madison Park uh reconvene, I mean, redesign program. As you understand, the 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 mayor of Boston has put that project on hold to file for an MSP application to receive more funding for the renovation or redesign of Madison Park. My uh, I would like to speak to the committee tonight to say about, with this process, there was no community engagement. Oh, let's just say proper community engagement for this process. When there's a major process of over six, eight of over $600 million to $800 million, the process means that all the abutters on the circumference of where Madison Park is that is located was not done. But now, we now have to go through the MSB process, which is not a guaranteed process of an application to receive additional funding. If we do get funding, it's only going to be at 25%, which would mean somewhere around $250 million to $300 million. But we've heard from everybody involved in this process that building materials will still increase. But the major question is, what is Plan B if we do not receive, the application process is approved, what is Plan B? That would mean that Madison Park would have to wait three to five years in order to be renovated. So that's just not Madison Park. But again, talking about the process, engagement, family engagement was not done. But that's not just for Madison Park. I look at it overall for all projects, grade reconfigurations throughout the city, that are we really involving the major stakeholders? That is something that this budget has to look for. Another one, sports, the sports budget. We have five to six high schools that do not have varsity programs, which affects the students in those schools on building school spirit and extracurricular participation. Let's also make sure on the transportation issue involving our student athletes who work so hard to participate in these sports, and sometimes they are either not able to attend these games or be late for games. Have a good evening, everyone, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Mike Heishman.
Mike Heishman, Dorchester. Thank you, Ms. Polanco Garcia, for being the sole member of the committee to vote against the closing of schools. Thank you for your courageous vote. I say courageous because historically, mayors do not appreciate independence from this appointed board. Dr. Alkins did acknowledge that closing schools damaged student outcomes. However, when you move our children into higher-performing schools, he said, they perform better. Dr. Alkins, if the school communities had believed that their children would be moving into better places, they would have expressed gratitude. Instead, at every recent meeting, they begged the committee to not destroy their communities. Modernizing our ancient facilities costs a lot of money. Closing schools save money. The priority is closures. On March 20, the committee was true to tradition and voted for closures. True to your racist tradition, those paying the price are mostly our low-income, black and brown children, many with special needs and many multilingual learners. Why was it that there was only one vote on school closures for the whole package? What if a member opposes some while supporting others? Why couldn't the vote have been divided? Why is there so much pressure on this appointed board to support the mayor, superintendent, and central office? Providing a high-quality education for all of our children is not your imperative. This appointed board is structured to promote deference and impotence. During this budget season, I attended and testified at every meeting. The most important thing that I learned was the parent-mentor program. With this one program, you improve learning, support deep family engagement, foster equity, and build a diverse teacher pipeline. This great program must be expanded. How many schools will have this program next year? My preliminary understanding of the proposed BPS BTU agreement promises significant improvements for inclusion done right. Unfortunately, the biggest losers are our multilingual learners. Many of them will be integrated into inclusion classes without adequate support in their primary language.
Thirty seconds.
There must be a greater emphasis on two-way programs where every child becomes fluent in English and in another language. The worst program is English immersion, where many of our MLL learners drown because of a lack of support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ed Burley.
Hi there. My name's Ed Burley. I live in Jamaica Plain, and I'm here with the NAACP Education Committee. I echo the concerns of a few of the other speakers, most of the other speakers, but I just want to make a few concise points around the school facilities' master plan and the school closing process. I noticed that Superintendent Skipper has spoken about the tension between providing information and the concern that that parents and students will flee those schools if they have a sense ahead of time that they're slated for closing, and then also wanting to create transparency and have input from the community, have a dialogue. So I'm curious, I'd like to hear how the school committee and the superintendent plans on resolving that tension, or if they've learned any lessons about how best to resolve that tension, and if that's a permanent tension, or if that's a short-term thing, now that more information has been put out about the rubric used to look at school closings. The second point is, I think it was Robert Jenkins who mentioned Madison Park and the redevelopment. And to echo his point, I'm curious, at what point in the process did the option of applying for the state funding and delaying the redevelopment, when did that become a significant possibility? Because the way it played out to us was that it was sprung out at the last minute, and so that was frustrating, disappointing to the people wanting to see the Madison Park redevelopment go forward. So any more information you could provide on those points would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much. Chair concludes public comment. You're mute.
Sorry. Thank you, Ms. Parvex, and thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspectives. Your testimony is very important to us. Our first action item this evening is the grants for approval totaling $79,182.76. Now, I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent for any final comments.
Thank you, Chair. So there's two grants tonight for your approval totaling a little more than $79,000. The largest is the Aspen Challenge sub-grant. It's a new grant totaling more than $75,000, exactly $75,182.76. And this is intended to serve 36 teachers and 144 students at 18 high schools. This grant will support two school-based coaches who are working with high school students to develop a response to one of the six challenges proposed to them by community champions. This is all part of the Aspen Challenge. The grant will pay for teacher stipends, professional development costs, and substitute teaching. The second is a $4,000 grant, which is also new, the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners Explore Grant, serving 200 students at the Gru Elementary School. The purpose of this grant is to use federal library services and Technology Act funding to provide explore grants that improve library services, collections, programs, and boost circulation among students, including multilingual learners. So thank you to the committee for consideration, and I would ask for your approval of these two grants.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Just before we approve the aspect, Superintendent, when will we be getting an update on what the projects are that the students have chosen?
So we can, we can provide that. The actual showcase is, I believe, April 29, when they'll be formally presenting. But I will ask Ann Clark to provide a memo to the committee to be able to highlight the schools and what they've chosen.
Great. Thank you. So are there any questions? Don't go on. Is no, okay. Yes. Mr. Ishmael?
Yeah, all right. Thank you. So I just wanted to know if, like, for the next, for the upcoming years, is this going to be continued tradition, where we're going to work with different, where it's going to be working with different schools with different projects? And if so, are we just going to be looking at the outcome of this year's projects to see how much we, how much we should invest into the next year's one?
Great, great question. So the way that the challenge is designed is that the Aspen Institute and the Bezos Foundation commit to the city for two years, to the district. And each year is a different round of competition. The winner of this year's, or the winners of this year, go to the Aspen Institute in the summer and present their final products in front of a panel of judges. Next year, there will be an additional 20 schools. There may be some overlap of schools that did participate this year, and then next year, there may be some new schools added to that, but different students. So the idea is to get as many as possible involved. I think above that, it's to also help the school, district, and city set up the infrastructure to continue the challenge more in a traditional fashion. So we invite nonprofits, businesses to come watch, to be a part of, so that eventually we'll be able to support this kind of challenge ourselves as a district. But the first step is this year's competition, having the student teams develop their products, and then present those in the April 29 showcase.
All right. Thank you. And I look forward to seeing those projects in the future, yeah.
That's right. You'll be coming back from college.
Okay, if there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, second, sorry.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Parvex, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The grants are approved.
Great, thank you. Our final action item for tonight is the superintendent's final Fiscal 26 General Fund Budget Recommendation in the amount of $1,580,61,477. That's it. Oh, okay. So I would, okay, I'll take this opportunity to emphasize and reiterate a crucial point to the public and our members regarding our bylaws, Chapter 613, Section 1D. The section stipulates that, quote, "The school committee may adopt, reject, reduce, or increase any item of the recommended budget provided. However, that if the school committee fails to take definitive action on the annual budget on or before the 4th Wednesday in March of each year, the annual budget as recommended by the superintendent shall be deemed approved as it is formally approved by the school committee. As such, let us remain cognizant of the significance of this process and approach it with due diligence and careful consideration." So before I open it up to the committee for questions and comments, I'd like to invite the superintendent to offer some final thoughts.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chair. So tonight, we are asking this body to approve the Boston Public Schools $1.58 billion budget. I really want to thank, first off, the BPS leadership, our deputies-in-chiefs and school leaders, educators and school staff for working closely to develop this budget over a very long process that lends us to be here tonight. I also want to thank our families and our community partners for their feedback during public comment and also during the school year with their school communities. I also want to thank the members of this committee. Since first introducing the budget on February 5, we've worked together to align the district's budget priorities to the school committee goals. And I appreciate your insightful questions, our thoughtful discussions that we've had. These conversations keep us grounded in our primary guiding question, which is, what do we have and how are we using it for the benefit of our students? As I said when we began this process, this budget honors our commitment to putting students first while maximizing and strengthening programs and initiatives that are showing the greatest success and growth. We've discussed at length the trends that are affecting this year's budget and how careful fiscal stewardship has helped minimize the impact. We also explained our zero-based budgeting approach and prioritized all available funds for our schools while eliminating what is not providing the desired outcomes for our students. This is the first year entirely without federal SRR pandemic relief funds. We are continuing to see the impact of inflation on our maintenance costs, and for the first time in a decade, we are seeing an increase in enrollment with a steady influx of our multilingual learners and students with disabilities, which means we need to change the overall way that we allocate resources. We're grateful for the historic investment in our schools by Mayor Wu in each of the past three years. This support has made possible for the district to navigate these trends. Working with the mayor and her team, we created a budget that continues our commitment to our core priorities while bringing annual growth back down to a more typical level of 3.5%. We've identified approximately $5 million in central office efficiencies that are being reinvested directly into our schools in key priority areas, including librarians, social workers, inclusive education support, multilingual programming, college and career pathways, and alternative education. Our strong fiscal management has ensured that in the coming year, we will be able to continue to focus on the priority areas of implementing inclusive education, expanding access to native language through dual language, transitional bilingual education, and multilingual programming, continuing our long-term facilities planning, strengthening our college and career pathways, growing our hub schools, and making sure students and families have the resources they need to help their children succeed. Once more, I'd like to recognize the members of the BPS budget team, Chief Financial Officer David Bloom, Blair Dawkins, who's our deputy chief financial officer, and Budget Director Serena LaRoche. They have worked many long days and nights to get to this point, and I'm grateful to work alongside the team that is not only committed to strong fiscal management, but is dedicated to improving the lives of our city's students. So with that, I will turn it over to our, to you, back to you, Chair, and eventually to David Bloom.
Great. Thank you. I'll now open it up to questions and comments from the committee. Mr. Cardet Hernandez, and then Dr. Alkins.
Dr. Alkins can go first. Your hand was up first.
Always a gentleman and a scholar. A few questions. I mean, let me start off by saying, in terms of just what the allocations are, I don't have major objections to sort of the buckets that we are. But I do have some questions regarding like how this shapes out, I think, on the other side of things. So for example, a question I've, I asked earlier today, and I think it's relevant, is when we think about multilingual learners and sort of our push towards native language instruction for like for the entire district, how, like, I guess, what is our timeline for that? And I guess, like, how much does this budget sort of advance us towards that vision for the entire district? And then also within our understanding of Our understanding of. For multilingual learners specifically. How are we going to be evaluating the, the success of service mapping? Because it is new to the district, it seems, as a strategy. So how are we going to be evaluating that? As whether or not that's effective? So I'll start there.
Thank you. For those questions and I'll, I'll take a first answer on the. Budget portion. And I see some of my colleagues from the Office of Multilingual Multicultural Education are on the call. This year's budget. Reflects the start of a really significant expansion in multilingual education. With new programs rolling out at multiple schools across the district. While those programs will roll out, so the first year impact might be more limited. That is a, a pretty appropriate and historically successful way to roll out new programs. So for example. The new program at the Blackstone, while starting in early grades, will eventually cover the full spectrum of grades. K2 to 6 at the Blackstone. I also think. We have shown sort of through the long-term facilities plan. An ability to. Tie improvements in multilingual education. To mergers and consolidations that are happening in the district. So. For example, this year or this upcoming year, the Sarah Roberts. School merged from the Philbrick in the Sumner will have a new bilingual Spanish program. And you know, the year after, we will open up the new Cabo Verdean Creole Dual Language Program at. The, the new Frederick merged school. And I'm excited that this year's budget does include funding for a planning year for that program as well. To ensure it opens up successfully. So I think. While because of sort of the nature of a rollout, the number of students next year might be more limited. This really does set us up. For a sort of exponential increase in students in programming. As both new programs open and existing programs roll up to more grades. I see my colleague just turned on her camera, so I'll turn it over to Brittany.
Thank you, Chief Bloom. Thank you, Dr. Alkins, for the question. Want to talk specifically about service mapping for our multilingual learners. So we measure our success in this in a variety of ways. So we started service mapping in advance of Budget Colab. To ensure that every school had the number of ESL staff that they needed to be able to provide ESL services to all of their students. From there, we work closely with school leaders. To look at how all of that is scheduled in a building with. Students' IEP service needs also being met. So we take a look and see if a student needs. You know, OT services and they need ESL instruction. How is all of that happening in a day? How is all of that happening with lunch and specials? And all of the other things that a school leader has to think about. So our team is working directly with school leaders when they're making their schedules for next year after access results come out in. In May. We measure our success in a variety of ways. We have a compliance dashboard that we're constantly, constantly looking at to make sure that every single English learner student gets the services that they're entitled to. And then we. You know, we make changes. We work with schools and alter schedules if needed, so students are receiving their services.
And I'm sorry, the dashboard is new?
The dashboard has been in effect for the two years that I've been with the Boston Public Schools.
Oh, no, I, I guess I'm sort of asking because it does sound like something that would be beneficial for. Like families and just, I mean, for all those who are just concerned to sort of know about the progress with, that we are making in terms of. Investments with. Multilingual learners. So. Like, that was interesting for me to know. Thanks. And. Another question I had, and I guess this is related just to our overall. Understanding of how. Funding is flowing to our schools that are most in need. And so. This is mostly around, I asked this question also earlier with regard to. Transformation schools. So obviously. We have a subset of our schools that are the most in need. And I'm wondering how we're evolving, what that criteria is and what that definition is, so that we're ensuring that. Within this budget and future budgets, that funding is going to those schools specifically. And so I'm just wondering what that process is for really reimagining that.
Thank you for that question. I appreciate it. So. The core of our funding for transformation schools remains focused on instructional coaching supports. At the secondary school, we think that work can build into existing admin and planning periods, but at the elementary school level. That additional instructional coaching work is also paired with additional planning time. For homeroom teachers to get some additional coaching, just because the elementary schedules tend to be a little bit tighter. And then the other thing I, I want to mention is. With our transition to the regional model. We've also put in a renewed emphasis on. The transformation office and the work they do to sort of be. Almost like super regional supports. For our transformation schools, ensuring that they're getting sort of. Super duper A-plus service from all of our central office departments. I can say from my lens in finance. I know if my team is missing anything for our transformation schools, I'll get an email from Mike. With some data and asking our team to provide some additional support. So I think that the, the combination of those school-based instructional resources. And then the transformation team resource built into the regional model is really helpful. Is what I see from the budget side. As, as sort of the main supports we're going on now, but obviously that is an ongoing conversation as well.
Thank you, and I'll wait to come back around.
Okay, you still had time. If you had another question in this room.
Build off of what other people.
Okay. Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Thank you. I guess I don't really have a question because I am aware that some of the, the. Sort of structural things I was asking for just couldn't be provided by the time of the vote. And. I trust that we're gonna get there. I think. I'm trying to think of how to word this. I want to, I guess, start and just acknowledge, like, there's great work happening across our district and in our classrooms. And then at the same time, I think I'm struggling to see like the effectiveness of our current budgeting process and. And how we then come together to make decisions. So. You know, over the past few years, I've shared many of the same. Concerns around a sort of strategic vision. Our, our goal is to drive improved outcomes for every student. But I guess I still lack a strong sense of what we're committed to offering every student and family in order to achieve that goal. And that's a really important piece for us as we think about the budget. In some areas, I will say, and this is under the superintendent's leadership too, it has felt more, it has felt clearer. Right? Equitable literacy is one of those examples. Our objectives feel clear there. However, from other initiatives, the path forward feels a little bit more opaque. Like, does this budget fully fund our multilingual learner needs or our special education needs? Or our vision for hub schools or early college or athletic goals? We have MasCor, but like, does this budget bring us closer to fully realizing it? Are we aiming for 80% with this budget or 100% or 60%? I guess what other interventions are we funding and for what percentage of students do we think they're necessary for? Like, does this cover 50% of that or 100% of that? Similarly, I've talked about this a lot, like our goals for counseling ratios. Does this budget move us towards achieving that? At what percentage? I guess it's about naming what we believe we need to build and then sharing how close we are to building it. And not in like the platitudes that we sometimes do here, because that doesn't work in a budget in the same way. I think it's like pretty crucial to have clarity. On these questions in order to make a sound fiscal decision. And what I hope we can develop over the coming year. Is a clearer vision for that universal experience we want to provide for every student. I know there's commitment here to doing that. I think this should also include with the recognition that schools are different. This should include a differentiated vision for the school system. So like. What percentage of schools we want as hub or early college or insert program? But like a clarity around, we are funding towards realizing this thing with these percentages. I guess that would require us to define the portfolio of programs and services we believe are necessary. And then assess. How much closer this budget brings us to achieving that vision? And I'm, I, I'll say this, because I, I'm, I am struggle on the vote. I'm confident that there are important solutions and, and the maintenance of really critical and. Good programs that have built momentum within the budget. I just think. I know I'm talking a lot, but I think we could move with greater urgency. And fund with more precision if we tied. The budget to those explicit solutions. And I just don't feel that we have achieved that level of clarity yet. I'm su, I'm sure this budget will pass. But to get to that.
One minute.
Precision we discussed, I'd be very happy to partner. Support in any way that I can. I just think that that is what is good for kids and that those types of goals are good for the speed. That funding can create. So. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Thank you, Chair. I'll be brief. I don't have any questions, just comment. Of course, thank you Superintendent Dave and the entire budget team and just the overall district, because I know it takes. It's more than just the budget team to make this happen. I think one thing that I want to name and equate some of the concerns that. My fellow members have shared, because it just always feels that we, there's some progress, but. Some communities continue to be harmed in some way. I'm using harm, it sounds strong, just. Lack of having another word, but. I just wanted to note for once, at least for the past couple of years that I've been. Engaging with the budget in this role and other role is seeing that a good amount, you know, a good cut. Was into the, to the central office and being able to see that those were. Free purpose to go directly to schools. I think that is something that I just wanted to name. I think over the years, we've always heard that we needed to look at the central. Office budget, especially when it came to salaries. So I just wanted to note that. For once, I'm seeing progress there. And I think there's more that we can do, not only with. Central office, but overall district, how we can really look at how we're making allocations. And that helps us show how it aligns to the outcomes. A lot clearer. Like I said, I don't have any comments, but I think that for me was one highlight. At this budget and not to diminish all, you know, questions and concerns that we've had. But for me, that was something that I just wanted to say thank you for doing that, because sometimes. We've often seen the district is hard. To make those decisions, but it's clear that we have, you know, our students have their needs. And we need to prioritize them first. Without the students in the district, we will not have a district. So we will not have a school committee, right? So I just wanted to make sure that overall they were always putting the kids first. The students first at every decision that we're making. And again and again, some of these decisions are going to be hard. And uncomfortable. And I've made a couple. So I just wanted to name that. And again, thank you for all the work that you're doing. Thank you for the public for continuously to also come and testify. And really advocate for their families and their community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. What the plan ahead is that to, we're going to vote for a budget, correct?
Correct.
I'm going to try to be brief and I'm going to go directly to the questions I do have for you regarding this. What I have heard is that there is a program, the SEI. Given by the acronym SEI, this immersion program. So it is my understanding that this particular program will not be offered in some of the grades in some of the schools. That's what I understand. I was wondering, what is the plan going ahead? What programs are you guys planning to bring? Because what I heard in particular to the Blackstone. Is that this immersion program might not be offered for next year for some of the grades. So. What type of programs or alternatives will be offered if not that SEI program? Particularly the Blackstone, that, that's what I heard.
So I'll, I'll, I'll turn it over to my colleagues from OMME in a moment, but I think. What we're trying to do is. Roll out, sort of roll back some of the legacy programs. District-wide while we roll out new programs. But. I'm not 100% sure on the Blackstone, so I'll, I'll pass it over to Brittany to, to give a little more information.
Thank you, Chief Bloom. I also want to, I want to introduce myself to everyone. My name is Brittany Baggett. I'm Deputy Chief of Operations and Accountability in OMME. I think I've met some of you before. It's a pleasure to see you again. I also just want to introduce my colleague, Dr. Elena Luna. She is Deputy Chief of Instruction and she is also on the call tonight. Thank you so much for the question. So we are trying to align all of our programs to DESI-approved programs. So that is increasing our opportunities for dual-language education programs. For transitional bilingual education programs, newcomer programs, and inclusive SEI programs. So the Blackstone next year is launching its dual-language Spanish program, which we're incredibly excited about. The dual, the Blackstone community has opted to do two strands. So there's going to be two classrooms of kids rolling up. And we're incredibly excited about the dual-language program at the Blackstone. At the same time, they are also going to have inclusive SEI. So that families choosing the Blackstone will have a choice of both types of program options. When families go to register at the Newcomer Assessment and Counseling Center. They're presented with all of the different choices in the district and they choose which one is right for them. So some of them choose to be closer to home. Some of them choose a transitional program that offers. Some support in a student's native language in the beginning. Many choose dual-language. But all of our programs are aligned with DESI-approved programs and definitions. That is what we are striving towards while we also increase. Native language opportunities for students.
So what I heard is in two particular classrooms that that bilingual program will be offered. That's what I heard. However. What I heard actually. Is that none of the classrooms will have this particular program. What I heard actually is that none of the classrooms will have this particular program, Elena.
Entonces como un padre, como los padres van a poder elegir, sabemos que solo son dos sa- dos salones. Si, si un padre le pregunta, va a decirme, ay, yo quiero que, que mi hijo vaya a una aula bilingüe, pero no van a tener, no, no va a dar abasto porque solo son dos salones. Y repito, lo que estoy escuchando es que ningún salón de Blackstone va a tener, eh, va a tener este programa ya.
So what I heard, and I'm going to emphasize that one more time, what I heard is that no classroom at the Blackstone School will have this particular program. So, uh, the, the problem is that only two classrooms will be offering this particular program. So it might not be sufficient for the demand that could be presented by many parents if they would like to participate or if they're interested. There will be only two options, which is allocated to two classrooms, not to every classroom. That is my understanding.
Um, so dual language, it does roll up year after year. So yes, initially it is only the two classrooms. And then every year it expands until, um, until sixth grade. If a parent in the area wants a dual language program, the Hernandez continues to be open district wide. We also are expanding, um, to Philbrick Sumner, um, the McKay is going to have a transitional bilingual education program. So yes, uh, you, in order to do, do dual language correctly, it has to be a grade by grade roll up. And that is the purpose of us, you know, that is why we are expanding, um, over the next several years. But yes, it will start only, um, in that first, those first two classrooms.
Brittany, it might be helpful to just explain, um, that we go through a D E S I process in getting the program approved and that is the flow and the format that D E S I approves.
Yep. So we turn our, uh, uh, program proposals into D E S I in September. Their deadline is January, but we turned it in, in September so that all of our materials are ready um, for the welcome centers, um, that school showcase and, um, all of the printed materials. So family, families know at the showcase, all of the programs that are going to be in each of the schools. Um, we submit to D E S I all of our, um, curriculum, our language allocation plan. Um, and for dual language programs, you do have a grade by grade roll up. Um, because you wouldn't have a child learning primarily English. You know, many of our English speaking students that benefit from these programs as well. You wouldn't have them take curriculum in English and then be in a fifty fifty model the next year. So that's why it's a grade by grade roll up, um, and a longer term commitment for both the, the district and the families.
O sea, la meta es que ning- ningún grado para el próximo año lo va a tener. Solo vamos a tener dos aulas que van a tener, eh, programas bilingües. Pero ningún grado de la Blackstone va a tener programa S I, va a tener el programa S I A, ¿verdad?
So just to clarify, no classroom in the Blackstone School in particular will have the S C I program. So we're talking about only two classrooms that will be offered this particular option, correct? Just two classrooms for next year.
Uh, two classrooms that will be offering dual language and then the rest of the classrooms will be offering inclusive S C I.
Okay.
Brittany, it might be helpful to say how that's different or the same as what Blackstone's been doing.
Great. Dr. Luna wants to take that question.
Yes. So the S C I program, uh, the inclusive S C I program that is um, aligned with D E S I is where teachers are sheltering the English content so that our English language learners that are in that class have access to the content, whether that's in math, science, English, language arts. And they also receive the English language development, um, ninety minutes of their, an E L D one or two and the forty five minutes of their three, four or five. And so the, the program continues to exist in an inclusive setting rather than all English language learners being in one classroom. So they still receive the sheltered English immersion approach. They're just now with English speaking peers as well, rather than in a separate classroom.
Thank you very much. Uh, mi segunda pregunta es con relación al título, a los fondos del título uno y no los fondos que van a las diferentes escuelas. El fondo del título uno que va a la oficina central.
Well, my second question has to do with the Title One funding or the Title One funds that are related to the, uh, central office.
Okay. Eh, quiero saber cuánto va a tener del fondo del título uno la oficina central.
So my question is regarding this, what amount will be allocated in terms of funding regarding the, the two? How much will be allocated to central office coming from Title One? That is my second question.
Um, thank you for that question, Member Palanco Garcia. Our current plan is to have somewhere around eighteen million dollars from Title One managed through central office. This will primarily support summer programming, um, parent and community engagement, uh, academic instructional supports and professional development as well as some, um, data evaluation of said programs.
Gracias. Hay un plan para involucrar a las familias y me refiero, sé que, sé que ha dicho que los fondos del título uno alocado en el fondo central van a apoyar a las familias, a los estudiantes. Pero hay un plan para que estos, estas familias, estos padres se involucren y puedan decidir cómo quieren que estos fondos sean gastados.
So it is my understanding that families and that families will be involved as well. And the, uh, they will be beneficiaries of, of Title One as well. But my question in particular to you, Mr. Bloom, is there a plan to involve the families considering and providing that they will be the beneficiaries from this particular funding coming from Title One? What is the plan to involve the families?
I think we have a couple of approaches to community involvement and family involvement in our Title One plans. The first are all of our school level meetings. But then of course, for the central office, um, budget plans, I think uh, each program has a slightly different community engagement strategy. Some work through citywide parent bodies like the Citywide Parent Advisory Council. Others have more, um, sort of independent means like surveys or other feedback that's collected as well as just comments and conversations we hear through, um, parent meetings and other engagement opportunities that's run by the Office of Family and Community Advancement. Um, I appreciate your continued feedback on the, um, areas of growth, let's say, that we still need to make around this engagement work. And I think we can continue to work to improve this. And I think, um, either when we come back before this body in May to discuss the sort of pre-approval for the plan, or when we come back in September or October to vote on the actual budget for the plan, we can provide you an update on that. Um, progress and I would love to get your just sort of continued feedback and guidance around ways we can improve that work. Thank you for your advocacy around this.
Muchas gracias. Y, y vamos a seguir, definitivamente vamos a seguir hablando porque como muchos de ustedes saben, hay una orden judicial que ha dicho que los padres tienen el derecho. Aprendices del idioma inglés, hay una parte bien sustancial de este dinero que debe ser utilizado en favor y provecho de ellos.
So it is very important, Mr. Bloom, to keep having this, uh, productive conversation as we know. Title One talks about the, the parents and the rights that they do have in this regard. And that is according to the, uh, judicial order that currently exists to benefit directly the, uh, English language learners. And there is a financial allocation in this purpose, so we do have to continue this conversation.
Mi última pregunta es sobre, ah, me queda un minuto y cincuenta segundos. Mi última pregunta es sobre los recortes que, eh, escuché, tuve la oportunidad de leer que la oficina central hizo recortes para alocarlo en provecho de, 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 de los estudiantes.
So I know I have a minute and fifty seconds and I do, it came to my knowledge that, actually there were some budgetary cuts from the central office for the pay purpose to, and that particular amount being a cut was going to be allocated to some of the students. That, that was my understanding that those cuts will benefit the students.
Entonces vi en la tabla que nos mostraron a nosotros los miembros del comité que hubo recorte en la parte que habla del involucramiento de las familias y que hubo dieciocho posiciones del fondo, de la oficina central que también fueron cortados. Entonces.
It is my understanding that, uh, eighteen positions were cut from central office as well. According to the table or the graphic that was shared with us. So that, those cuts involved eighteen, um, positions that were cut as well. So therefore.
Sería mucha molestia pedir, please, que nos expliquen dónde pusieron, cortaron estos fondos. Lo cual me parece que, que, que están pensando, ¿verdad?, nuestros estudiantes, pero dónde lo colocaron? Do- donde específicamente que pudieran explicarnos un poco más sobre esto.
I will very much appreciate if you could please, if it's not much to ask, those particular funds that were cut. What is the allocation of those funds that were cut? Where did that money go? If it's not too much to ask, if you can please elaborate on that a little bit.
Um, it's not too much to ask at all. Um, so, uh, the funds went into several programs. These ranged from five new, uh, additional librarians at, uh, schools, uh, and to, uh, expanded swim programming. And expansion of investment in alternative education. Um, as well as some expansion of work in our welcome centers and helpline. Um, because even though those aren't school budgets, those are direct services to families and students. So five additional schools, um, received librarians. It's the, the Roosevelt, Bada East, Boston Green Academy, Fenway High School and the Murphy Elementary. Um, we also expanded, um, programming at, uh, Bada East and Boston Day and Evening as we continued investments in alternative education. Um, we expanded in-school swim programs at, uh, Charlestown High School, Madison Park, uh, the Mason, uh, the Mildred K to eight and the Murphy K to eight. And then we are also starting new programs at the Quincy and the Umana. Um, so those are the main, um, the main changes, um, that have happened with, with that. And then the last thing that's sort of still ongoing and still in planning is some, um, high school pathway and programming supports. Um, specifically at the Holland Tack and at Madison Park. The teams are still designing some of those supports. So that money is still in reserve from the central office reductions. But it will go to, it's sort of set aside for those schools once their designs are complete.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Definitivamente vamos a continuar estas conversaciones.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bloom. And definitely we will, this conversation will continue and I appreciate all your comments. Thank you very much.
Mr. Tran?
Thank you. Uh, just a few general comments and some suggestions as well. Of, first of all, I've heard all members, uh, questions, concerns and I, ideas, suggestions uh, toward this, um, important budget. Uh, I hear you all and I share that. I share all, all of your concerns. Particularly the, the kind of issues and suggestions as well as concerns raised by the member Brandon Caddet Hernandez. I share that. I truly share that. Uh, the, uh, second, I appreciate the, uh, administration under Mary, Superintendent Mary Skipper had completed a budget and presented to us that I believe had met most of my concerns. Well, now comes, comes my concern. As you know, I have always been, I have always been in a posi- a very guarded positions when it comes to inclusion. I understand that. We, we are trying to practice inclusion done right. But when, when the inclusion involved, uh, students with disability as well as multi-language students, I remain guarded. But at the same time, I have always struggled with myself regard, you know, in, in thinking about the committee's power that relating to budget as well as the implementation and design of the budget that falls under the, the the ages of, uh, Superintendent Mary Skipper. Uh, we hired her. She comes with experience. We trust in her. And personally, I believe, I strongly believe that her heart is in the right place. We all are. We are all, we are all trying to advance students' interest. And we are all trying to see that, uh, to, uh, to see that students, uh, advancement particularly in relation to, uh, opportunity gap are resolved and are dealt with, um, not adequately, but are dealt with in the, the most important way and in the most productive way. Line items in my own opinion, line items regarding the budget falls within the ages of Mary Skipper. Uh, we look at them and we, we, you know, we, 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 we advocate for, for our concerns. We advocate for the kind of issues that we, we, uh, wanna see in the budget. And of course, um, when it comes to students with disability and it comes to, uh, multi-language students.
One minute.
I see. Uh, so I, just to, just to complete my, my, my thought. I believe that, um, given the fact that you have four additional investment in those areas. Uh, I, I, I think, I, I'm pretty sure that, you know, the budget will, will, will pass. I will vote for it. But with a caveat, please, you know, during the next process, making, please make sure that suggestions, ideas and concerns particularly regarding, um, uh, uh, Member Hernandez are addressed and, and brought forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, um, thank you Superintendent and to the team that has worked diligently on this budget since September or October. I know there have been a, a number of meetings with schools as it was put together. It's always difficult to be working so far in advance with a lot of uncertainties. Um, I have, as I've alluded to during the budget hearings, I have spoken with a number of school leaders and there's a feeling of, people generally say it's okay. Like there were some challenges with them, some good things, but um, the general sense is it's okay. And, uh, that means a lot when school leaders uh, are saying that about the budget, because they would always like to have more, obviously. I do know and, um, the Superintendent and the Chair were at a, a national conference I was not at. but I do know from our colleagues across the country, a lot of districts are facing substantial cuts. Closing schools, cutting staff, cutting extracurricular programs, et cetera. And we have, we have a budget that is, that is not doing that at this point. There's a lot of uncertainty in this budget. Mainly due to, as we talked about last week, the federal funds, potential cuts to Title I, Title II, Title III, IDEA. You know, where we stand on the federal level, the impact of federal funding to the state and what that does for us. And even the impact of commercial property tax revenue in the city of Austin and what that will do for availability for us in the future. So I am concerned about, I, I appreciate the work the district has done. Incredible job by the superintendent and the financial team in navigating the S R funds going away and, you know, the fact that we're not happening to make substantial cuts as a result of that is, is a testament to the hard work. I do encourage us, as I've talked about in some of the budget hearings, to continue to focus on efficiencies as much as possible. And as our dollars become more limited in the future, it is critical that we work to make sure that all of the team, central and within schools, are working as hard as possible for our students because as I, as I said in the budget hearings, nothing can breed nervousness and anger at the school level if they feel that the funds are not being used properly in the, in the folks that are working with them. So I, I know we've talked about this Superintendent, I know you've, you've been working on it with your team. So thank you for that. But I do, I do believe, I, I echo the comments of our fellow members that, you know, as we move forward, let's make sure we are intensely focused on how the budget ties to student achievement and how the budget ties to the goals that the district has set, the school committee has set and how we monitor and make sure as our funds become more limited in the future, how we are laser focused on spending appropriately. And just as importantly as adding new programs is stopping programs that are not working. And sometimes it's very, very hard to do. There's always pushback when people get used to it. We've started to do that hard work on schools. I know we've done it on classrooms as well, but programs will be interesting because we need to make sure the programs we are funding are laser focused on success and increase in achievement. Plain and simple. But I know this has been incredibly hard work on behalf of the superintendent and the finance team headed by you, Chief Bloom, and I thank you for that. I thank you for diligently answering my questions throughout the process because I know we always have plenty of them. And I've read the answers to other members as well. So thank you for this work and I look forward to supporting this budget. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I want to add my voice to the thanks for the hard work that you all have put into this budget as you do. And thank you very much for the budget book. You know, it's a beginning process, but it was very helpful having it. I agree with what Mr. Cardet Hernandez has said, particularly regarding of understanding where we're heading. I, I am hoping, I mean, I know each time when we do this budget cycle, we will approve a budget in March. But the budget we approve in March and the budget that we start school with in September are two different things. Critically this year, we need to understand what is happening, positive and negative. As the budget goes through other iterations, what we find out both from the state, the city and the federal government, if there were changes being made. What I feel would be helpful is to understand where are we now? You know, we know that we voted many years ago to, you know, to increase the number of libraries or any number of things. We don't really have a clear understanding of what we have to understand what we want to have. And, you know, so that we can say, you know, where are we now with the amount of psychologists that we have for students? We know our students are needier than what the national average may be. How does that play out? I think we need to understand a little bit more what our investments are as they relate to what our needs are in the district because they're, you know, how do you get to choose whether you increase swimming versus you need an extra reading specialist? We don't have the ability to understand sort of quantifying what we need. All of the things that we find are necessary to giving our kids the best education possible. But how do we go about making the harder choices? And we know given where we're heading in this country, we're going to get to the point that we're going to have to make hard choices. The four days that we just had in Washington were extraordinarily sobering. Very sad. And I think many times we would sit with each other and say over and over again, we're glad that we are from Boston. Because what we were hearing our fellow members have to fight, you know, fight about and were frustrated with were not the things that we were dealing with here. I was talking with colleagues whose teachers' starting salary is forty-two thousand dollars. Our powers will make more than that. You know, there are any number of things that I think sometimes we take it for granted that we will have what we need because we have had the generosity of mayors over the past decade. And that are, that we value education in this city and do want to have the best education for all of our kids. But I think we need to understand more how we're doing that. There's a lot in a billion and a half budget. And wanting to make sure that every single penny of that is going to the right places. So I'm hoping that, you know, in the next quarter, that we will have another time to continue to discuss this, but to get some of that data so that we can understand sort of where are we starting from here? Where do we want to go and how will we get there? And if we have to come to make some hard choices, we'll begin to understand what those possibilities might be before we have to do those things. Because inevitable, something will change. But so this cannot be just an annual conversation. You know, we may need to figure out a task force or working group, something particularly as we know the budgets in this next cycle may be more difficult for us. So we may need to look at what structure with the district and the school committee and our community can come together on that can help to keep us moving forward on that. Dr. Alkins.
No, um, thank you for, for, for saying that, Chair. And I mean, I think like reflect, reflecting on what you, what you're saying and what everyone else is saying. I've thought about, I'm pretty sure people much smarter than me involved in this are doing this already. But I look at the new investments, you know, that we have in our, in our table. And similar to what we've called our long-term facilities plan, and there's some wiggle room in there. It seems like almost every priority that we have as a school committee needs its own strategic plan and a, a schedule for strategic investments. So that every year, we sort of know that this is perhaps what it is that we want to invest in, particularly this year to grow and to stick to that particular plan while also assessing and making changes. Like, because in some respects, I, like, I, I definitely hear the concerns where in many senses, it feels like to some degree, we're flying a bit blind. Where we're saying like, yes, we should make, like, I don't think there's a bad number to, to, you know, four million towards bilingual education expansion. It's not a bad thing at all. But it's also knowing like where that fits in the grand scheme of strategic investments towards some articulated goal of what that means at the end of the road, so to speak, for every school and for across our district. So I'm wondering if there is room or if there's already work being done around each of these things, these buckets, having their own strategic plan that's associated with them, similar to how we've treated the, the, the facilities planning. Just thought.
Superintendent.
Sorry, I couldn't find my little hand. And so I think this is a really good point and I think it ties into our strategic plan, which is now due to be redone. Which is going to look very different than the last strategic plan, just based on the last three years, it's post SIP, it's so I, I think that's where we can more deliberately add into what Dr. Alkins is saying. To be able, you know, and I also think that what you said, Chair, and I know Member Cardet Hernandez has said, and I think Member Tran said is like, I do think we can give you updates on like the school quality guarantee and things that in the past have been sort of promised. But I think it's a broader ask because when I hear members, their interest goes beyond that. Like pools, for instance, like how, you know, which, which schools have programs, like what's, who's doing education, what's the ratio? So I think we can do a couple of things. I think one is we can certainly collect from members the kinds of things that they would like to see a, a state of. And we can put that together. But then additionally, I think in terms of the strategic plan, which the goal is to then monitor more regularly, long-term benchmark, short and long-term benchmark. I think, you know, that's where we need to then start mapping out for the committee with a, with a, with a line back to the budget so that you can see its support of the strategic plan, which is going to have these kind of bigger buckets. We talk about long-term facilities, inclusive ed, bilingual and access to native language, things like that.
Thank you. Are there any last comments? Okay, if there's nothing further, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's final fiscal year twenty-six general fund budget recommendation, the amount of one billion, five hundred eighty thousand, million, sixty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars as presented. Is there a motion?
So much.
Move. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Pravik, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins.
Yes.
Mr. Cardet Hernandez.
I'm gonna vote now.
Ms. Lima Barbosa.
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Tran.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill.
Yes.
Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
The budget is approved with six yeas and one nay.
Thank you. Our only report this evening is a presentation on the Code of Conduct Amendment. Let's aim to keep the present, presentation within ten minutes. And I'd like to remind our presenters to please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. I want to invite the superintendent to give introductory remarks.
Great. And, and thank you to the committee on the, the budget vote. Appreciate that. So the Code of Conduct, this is as a follow-up to the Council of Great City Schools' review of the district's safety practices back in two thousand twenty-two, as well as this committee's focus on good governance practice in general. We've been reviewing all the policies and identifying where revisions needed to be made. Earlier this school year, we brought forward the school naming policy, for instance, that hadn't been updated since it was passed in nineteen ninety-eight and made revisions that better align to our current reality and practice. As we continue this policy review, we expect to bring additional policies forward for revision to this body this spring and then next school year and in the future. Tonight, we're presenting an amendment to the Code of Conduct so that it aligns to changes made to the state law in two thousand twenty-two, the Massachusetts General Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven H and three-fourths. The BPS Code of Conduct is a policy document that establishes guidelines for student behavior that allows BPS to maintain safe and supportive learning environments for all students. The statutory changes have already been implemented in practice in the district. Schools now consider ways to reengage students through a number of different avenues before determining consequences. It also requires schools to clearly document that all available alternative remedies to suspension are considered and ensure that alternatives are effectively communicated to parents before a suspension is imposed. Dacia Campbell, our Assistant Superintendent and Code of Conduct Lead, will give tonight's presentation and provide more detail on the proposed amendment. We are asking the committee to vote at its next meeting on April sixteenth to approve this amendment so that the code formally reflects this change. Deputy Superintendent of Operations Sam DePina, Jody Elge, who's our Senior Director of Succeed Boston, are also here to provide support in case there's any follow-up questions. So at this point, Chair, I will turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Dacia Campbell.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Skipper. Good evening, Chair Robinson, the school committee members and members of the public. I am Dacia Campbell. I work in the Division of Schools. And this evening I'll be proposing an amendment to Section Six, Expectations of Suspension in the BPS Code of Conduct. I'm joined by Co-Chair Jody Elge and immediate past Chair Sam DePina, who will assist for questions at the end of the presentation. I think the superintendent did sum it up nicely, but again, in January twenty-twenty-one, the school committee approved the Code of Conduct. And in November twenty-twenty-two, this law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Seventy-One, Sections Thirty-Seven H and Three-Fourth was revised. And so the, the team took immediate action in terms of implementing the code, excuse me, implementing the new law. So we issued advisory guidance, we conducted training sessions, we provided office hours, we integrated the language into Code of Conduct training materials. We updated the companion Superintendent Circular Number Five and all of the relevant notifications that are parent-facing and school-facing. So we fully implemented the law. However, we did not go through the official process of updating the Code of Conic policy to reflect these changes. Therefore, we are seeking to amend this policy to reflect the guidance from the legislator. And the delay was really in part due to I did not know that I could request an amendment outside the revision cycle. It was my intention that when I re-revised the code, we present that policy within that document. Also, I just wanted to state that we did review this amendment recommendation with a Code of Conic Advisory Council as well as the BSAC, Boston Student Advisory Council. And both councils disagreed that we should be asking for an amendment now rather than wait for the revision cycle. So I'm just, Jody is going to start the slides and I'm just going to go through. Doesn't sound like, seem like they're going through. Do I have to share my screen?
Yeah, the slide, the, the slide is not up yet.
Okay, I apologize. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. I have the deck up, Jody, if it's easier for me to, to, for me to share.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
Let me see if I can get it up pretty quickly. Just give me. I actually have it up. I just don't know how to share it for some bizarre reason. Thank you all for your patience. I believe I'm sharing. Is that accurate?
You are.
All right. So thank you. So, um, just gonna go back. So what is the BPS Code of Conduct? Again, Superintendent did sum it up, but it's a policy document that establishes guideline for student behavior to maintain a safe and supportive learning environment. And the COC, the code emphasizes preventative and restorative approaches to discipline, aiming to address the misconduct and keep students engaged in education. So again, the purpose for the presentation is to request this amendment to the code. And I will go through the language in a, in a few slides. But again, this is our current practice. We're already been implementing this particular revision to the code, to the, to the law. So before I go into talking about Sections Thirty-Seven H and Three-Fourth, I just want to remind us that there are three laws that govern student discipline, the first being Section Thirty-Seven H. There are three laws that govern student discipline, the first being Section Thirty-Seven H, and that one addresses um, expulsions. Thirty-seven H and a half allows schools, um. Uh, that cover suspensions that are for indefinite suspensions for students who have been charged with a felony. But the legislature may changes to this law, Massachusetts General Law is Chapter Thirty, uh, Chapter Seventy-One, Thirty-Seven H and Three-Fours. And those um, suspensions cover in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions, short-term suspensions. And long-term suspensions and suspension appeal. So this is where the change was made. And so a brief summary of the law states, before suspending a student. The school must explore and document alternative remedies aimed at re-engaging the student in learning. Suspension should only occur if these efforts have been implemented, evaluated, and deemed ineffective. Unless specific reasons justify moving forward with the suspensions. So therefore, this means that before determining consequences, the school must attempt to re-engage the student in learning. Through a school-wide, um, school-wide model such as PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention Systems. Trauma-informed learning, social-emotional learning curriculum, or anti-bullying programs. So essentially, the new law uh, states that schools must use alternative learning-based remedies. Before resorting to suspensions. If a school makes a decision to not implement these alternatives, it must provide justifiable. Um, and very specific and limited circumstances. And there are three circumstances that I'm gonna review with you that a school could say. We're not going to try alternative remedies. So the first one would be that prior alternatives were ineffective. So essentially, the school is, is stating that they tried implementing alternatives such as mediation, conflict resolution. Restorative justice, um, collaborative problem-solving, conferencing, contracting with the students. But those alternatives did not prevent the student from this repeated misconduct. And so therefore, they're not going to try alternatives, and therefore, they're going to move to having a hearing and ultimately suspending the student. Um, another uh, circumstance, uh, that a limited circumstance that the school could consider using if they're not going to. Try alternative remedies is the alternative remedies are unsuitable or counterproductive. And therefore, the school will be saying that due to the serious nature of the offense, the substantial disruption to the learning. Or interference with others' rights and alternative, alternative remedies are not appropriate. And so this may be something relating to violations of civil rights, bias-based conduct. Or confirmed egregious cases of bullying. The last circumstance that a school could use is they could state that the student poses a safety risk. And so the incident was so, you know, it violated the code. But it, it was also so violent, it was bullying, it was harassing or threatening, and the student's continued presence at the school would pose a, a safety risk. Um, relating to bodily harm or harm relating to mental, emotional, physical. So those are the three, um, uh, special circumstances that a school would have to, that could cite. If they were not going to move forward with suspension. If a school cites any of these circumstances, it must be written. Uh, be given written notification to the parent guardian outlining the rationale for the suspension before it is imposed. Also, any efforts or supports to re-engage a student through the use of alternative methods, methods for each incident. Must um, be considered, um. All those supports must be documented in the student information system. The statutory change ensures that suspensions are used only when necessary. And that alternative methods are thoroughly considered and documented. So for example, before this law, schools could cite using perhaps like a bullying workshop as a form of support. And then they cited that they tried alternative methods to suspension. Now, schools like are mandated to use more one-to-one to support for students each time an incident occurs. Unless they can justify using one of the three previously mentioned circumstances for not using an alternative method. So I just wanna again, go over the timeline for this current code. We came and presented this code in September twenty-two, twenty twenty. It was voted on by school committee in twenty twenty-one, and we quickly began to revise all of the companion documents. Um, and we developed training materials in three areas to implement this code. Um, we, we worked on. With the um, OITT to develop materials to uh, make sure that schools. Know how to use properly the student information system. We built out um, multi-tiered systems of support. To ensure that schools were using um, this support, a structured support system to support students. Um, and also, we uh, created training around the, ultimately, all the changes that we made to the code. So while we were doing that, the legislator changed Massachusetts General Law Thirty-Seven H and Three-Fours. So we paused and we took immediate action to implement the law. So again, we issued advisory guidance um, to various stakeholders, those being a school-based staff, operational leaders, and school superintendents. We updated Superintendent Circular Number Five, we held office hours, some of the things I had previously mentioned. So we, um, also the notifications, we also had to adjust um, some fields in Aspen to start capturing alternative remedies. Um, so that we could have future data and track those. Um, and so we adjusted the materials that I mentioned in the previous slide to also include, how do we implement? Um, this law, and also, the biggest change, the materials that we made was in our uh, training. Relating to multiple-tier systems of support, really emphasizing what alternative remedies were. Um, previously, schools were used to the concept of alternatives to suspensions. So we really made sure that, we worked hard to make sure that they understood what that meant. And so that leads us up to this particular school year where, again, we continued to having to make changes. Um, within the student information system. Again, we wanna make sure that we're capturing as much data. As possible to see if schools are using alternative remedies. Um, and currently, we are, we've been working on school-based rules, um. To ensure that schools are using, uh, getting good guidance on using non-exclusionary practices. That they're providing, um. With, um, information on, uh, to students on their rights and responsibilities, that they're building. Uh, you know, productive, uh, good school climates. So we're actually in the midst of rolling out that piece to actually end the implementation of the code. And we, at the same time, we're starting our revision cycle right now. Actually, we started doing it, and we have a committee meeting actually tomorrow. So again, these are some of the benefits. I won't go through them in the essence of time. Um, of this new amendment of Thirty-Seven H and Three-Fours. Um, you know, it's not just about complying with the legal requirement. We do understand that this um, new law has benefits. Um, and so here are some of the ones that we've outlined. This is where I wanna do, I do wanna go over, um, that on the left-hand side is the current language. As it currently appears in the Code of Conduct. Um, the right-hand side, where, where it says proposed draft language, is the draft language difference that we are, um, seeking. To um, amend the code with. So it says, um, I'll just read it and I'm just gonna give you the difference. Um, and then I'll conclude. So it says, prior to determining disciplinary action for offenses described in Section Seven. The school must consider ways to re-engage a student in the learning process through alternative remedies from the school-wide model. As a result, before suspending or expelling a student, schools must employ alternative remedies. In response to a specific incident and document their use in Aspen of the results. The alternative remedies include following mediation, conflict resolution, restorative justice, and collaborative problem-solving. And that's not a non-existent, non-exhausted list, but that's some examples. If schools do not administer an alternative remedy, they must record in Aspen and provide the parent guardian, guardian written. Written notification why the alternative remedy is unsuitable, counterproductive, or why the student's continued presence in school. Would pose a risk of serious harm upon another student. So, before suspending a student, the school, um. Apologize. So, before, so actually. Apologize, I'll just um, tell you what, um, what I was going to, I've lost my notes, I apologize. So I'll tell you the benefits. Um, so before, um, before. The, how the law used to exist before is, school leaders could just, they could have a hearing. They could invite a family member in and, and the student, and they would give their side of the story. Um, but. The, the, the school leader and the administrator had great discretion to just administer, um, suspension. They didn't have to give the parent the rationalization prior to, um, suspending them. Also, um, they didn't have to. Um, document, uh, all their endeavors within the student information system. Um, also, they didn't have to give direct support to students around alternative remedies. Before, we used to have a concept called Alternatives to Interventions, and again, that was a little bit more broad. So with this new particular law, it does, um, it does, it does, uh, make it a little tighter. Um, also, the school, uh, was required to provide written and verbal notice, but again, they didn't have to include that rationalization. And there was also no, uh, no need to, no requirement to re-engage a student in learning. That was not a requirement. So the key difference, again, I'll just summarize, the schools did not need to document whether alternative remedies are considered before suspension. There was no mandate to provide written explanation justifying alternative interventions were used, and re-engagement was not an option. So. I'm sorry, I'm driving and I think that's the end of my slides, actually, but I'll just conclude. I apologize, as that, as I stated before, um, we have been, uh, actually implementing this law for quite some time. Um, it has just not been reflected in the, the policy document, and so we're asking for the school committee, um, to, uh. Enact this change within the present code so that it can fully, uh, reflect what we're, the practice that we're doing. And it can align with the other materials that we have. So thank you again, Chair Robinson. Thank you for the, for allowing for the technical difficulties. Thank you to the school committee and to the members of the community. Um, and we're happy to take your questions now.
I did wanna follow up, if it's okay, um, just to give you an indication of the before and after. So prior to this law, some of you may be familiar with, sorry, I didn't introduce myself. I'm Jody Elge. I'm the Senior Director of Succeed Boston at the Counseling Center. It's an honor to be here. Um, thank you for letting me testify or speak. Um, so some of you may, may know the Counseling Center as the Barron Center. You may remember back in the days when we would have fifteen hundred kids roll through the Counseling Center and all of those kids would be suspended. With the, with this new law, what we have seen is we've, we've begun to offer alternative remedies, as Dacia was talking about. And one of those alternative remedies is voluntary support for students pre-Code of Conduct violation. And this year, what is pretty significant is, we may have seen, at this point of the year, we may have seen a thousand students in the past. And most of those students would have had an out-of-school suspension. This year, I'm really proud to say that four hundred and seventy-three students have been suspended. And we have had four hundred and sixty students come through the voluntary program. So the impact already is quite great. The other, the other point is that we now provide push-in services for students. So, um, our clinical team at Succeed Boston goes into schools and provides. Observations, makes recommendations, and provides SEL lessons to younger students, or sometimes older students. Prior to a Code of Conduct violation. Um, so, you know, I think it's important that we get behind this. Um, this is just another step that, that the district has taken in that we. Daisy and I and the team, we've worked really hard to, um, to begin to change the narrative, to begin to. Um, change people's minds, the way they're thinking about, um, discipline, so to speak, and really focus more on education and prevention. So, thank you.
Sorry. Thank you very much for your presentation. I'll now open it up to the committee for your questions. Um, Mr. Tran?
No, I believe, uh, uh, Ms. Barbosa raised her hand.
Okay, I only see you on my screen with hands up, so I have to call it like I see it, so I don't know. All right, I'll go to Ms. Lima Barbosa and then to Mr. Tran.
Thank you, thanks superintendent, uh, and team for the presentation. I think it's always. Uh, good that we're trying, we're, uh, putting things onto paper and not just practice. Um, I, I, I do have two, uh, questions, concerns. In terms of supporting, um, specifically language access. We've heard a lot of allegations of families, especially those that don't speak, you know, English is not their first language. It can often be already, it's already intimidating, right, because their, their child might. Is probably going through a conduct process, right? So who's in the room? Who is responsible? What type of language access support are we, are we offering? To parents or guardians that don't speak English and their child's help, their child, right, navigate. Uh, this process. So that is definitely something that I'm curious about, because I've had a parent that comes to me and. I knew that English was not his first language, and there was just a lot of confusion of what the process was, because I could, even. Speaking his language, like we both spoke his language, I still couldn't understand. The other thing is, uh, record-keeping of, of conduct in cases by school. Like if Superintendent Skipper's not here anymore, right? If none of us are here anymore, but then. Six years later, we have a parent that comes back and wants to rehash, uh, a conduct situation. So how is, you know, what I'm hearing is that's probably helping us showcase that we did try other methods. Uh, so I appreciate that, because if we're only doing it verbally and it happened, it was best practice, but we didn't report that. Um, so first question was around language support. When I ask who's in the room, is it a, the families on? How, how do we get, get that staff that speaks Spanish? Is it the, the, the yell, like, I just wanna know what's the support there? The second one is record-keeping, how's this supporting that? And then, from what I'm hearing is that we're, am I, am I wrong or right here? We're looking at restorative justice practices, right? Uh, so let's just name that as well. Uh, but we've often seen concerns from families and communities, right, of like, are we actually practicing it? So would love to hear more, and thank you, Jody, for sharing, you know, some of the, uh, uh. Impacts that you all have seen already, because we've already been practicing this, right? Uh, but we'd love to learn more also on the, the population, who are the students, um, that did volunteer? Or, you know, historically, we've seen in the conduct, because when we think about conduct. Uh, unfortunately, black and brown, students with disabilities and students that do not speak English often, uh, were harshly. Uh, you know, held accountable in the past. So I'm hoping that, uh, not only with this amendment, but just as we move on forward, that we continue to keep that in mind. Uh, because sometimes just because the state or the federal government says we need to take a right. Uh, and it's sometimes it's passive, and I know because of your district and you have to align. Uh, with what the law is, but we have to make sure that, uh, they still don't harm our students, right? So I'll stop there. I would love to hear any comments or feedback, and maybe there's another hearing opportunity to get a more, um. Update of how this has helped the district, uh, moving forward. Thank you.
So thank you, Ms. Lima Barbosa, for that question. I'm gonna defer to Jody on the restorative justice question, but I'll answer the first two questions that you have. Um, and the first one was around, um, uh, language in terms of access to language. It is a due process requirement that the school, um, has to provide, um, interpretive service. Um, to, in the home language. Um, and so any, specifically at, around the hearing. And so, any, specifically at, around the hearing, or anything related to the code of conduct, that is a due process requirement. And so usually, they would get, they can, they have, can have an interpreter come in. By, you know, having a contracted person come in, we have those services. Or sometimes there's folks at the school that the family might feel comfortable with. Okay, so that, that, that they're supported that way. And if they're not supported that way, that is a due process violation, because they should have access in that home language. Okay, so that's just a short answer to that particular part of your question. You might have a follow-up?
Like a follow-up, I totally give, I mean, I should have been clear, I totally get on the, the hearing itself, the process itself. I think what, what I'm thinking is, as the situation happens, it gets reported, families are being contacted, I'm thinking more like outside of the actual hearings. And maybe that's not, you know, y'all's directive right now, but that's what I'm really concerned. Is the pre-hearing, this is happening, oh my God, what is going on with my kid? Why is there police involved? Why isn't ambulance being called? Like, that part, and then I, and then just, you know, as hearings break or whatever, that we continue to have some sort of support there. I understand that it would definitely be a due process violation, but I thank you for naming that, because parents need to know that, in order to know it's a violation for them to report it, but.
This is good feedback, because what I'm, what is important is typically what I hear is that schools are communicating with the family in the home language that they, in the language that they feel is, is that they, that they're articulating that they want. So even if it's not their home language, I've heard that mom feels more comfortable, so we have someone in the building that calls her and explains to her what happened. So if anything is not happening like that, we need to make those adjustments, because it's not just a bad.
It's not a particular role, it's not like the family liaison that does speak Spanish that's calling, it's just whoever. In the building, or whoever the family.
I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry.
We also are starting to take advantage of our assistive devices, translation devices that we recently secure. So additionally, assistive technology devices, we also have translated documents that we do provide and read to the families and make available. So if they can't understand, we definitely have the capacity to email to them and have them read through it. And to Dacey and Jodi's point, there's usually staff that do, and are able to speak the language of the preferred language or the actual language of the family. So between all those areas, we're usually able to communicate. And then, in the case of the hearings, we definitely secure the interpreter services where it's really a strong need to do that.
Yeah, yeah, and I would say, Ms. Lima Barbosa, this, it's an excellent question, because part of when there is an incident, is support not only for the victim or victims, but also for the student that's been involved with the behavior. So the communication with the family often is with who is the support network for that student? It can be a dean of student, it can be a social worker, it can be a family liaison, and language and accessibility gets put into that. Dacey and I just had a case where I hear expulsion appeal, and it was an example where the home language was listed as English, but it was very clear that the parent really wanted support with Spanish, so we provided that. So some of it is also not just going by what's in the system, but like really engaging with the family, because the goal is to figure out what's going on for the young person, and then how do you best support that young person?
Thank you, I appreciate y'all digging into that, because I was like, what happens before the hearings? Where often can go undocumented, because we are comfortable, we're talking to somebody that's comfortable, but there's, is there a rule or a person that also supposed to document what's happened prior? To also inform, right, folks in the hearing of what the, what actually happened and all of these events? So I'll stop there about that, because I know my time is probably gone, so y'all can answer some of my questions. Thank you.
So the second question that you have was around record retention, and you know, something coming back. So that is a little bit more complicated in the sense of, you know, we do have a student information system, but when it comes to disciplinary records, schools can only consider discipline from year to year, right? So if a student misses, if something happens, then next year, they can't say, well, you know, you did all these things last year, and so we're holding that against you, okay? And so, and also, when a student graduates, we only keep what we would call the temporary record, and it doesn't include disciplinary records.
And, and the last thing about when students graduate, we also voted on a policy, this body voted on a policy that we do not share any student discipline information with any colleges or any external folks to be P S, so that way it doesn't impede anyone's chance to success in the future.
And so the last question you have is about the expansion of restorative justice, and Jodi can speak to what her, what Succeed Boston has done to really expand that out. Jodi, you're on mute.
Thank you all, I apologize. I'm really proud of, of the work that, that we've been doing related to restorative practices. And I want to thank the superintendent and the district as a whole in investing in nine regional restorative practices, safe and welcoming school specialists. This year, we have a full team of nine, we have a restorative practices coach, instructional coach, and we also, the district invested in a director of restorative practices. We now have, I have the numbers, because it's pretty impressive, I'm really proud of the team. You know, Ms. Lima Barbosa, you said that people have been asking about it, and you're absolutely right, people have been asking, schools have been asking, they're really excited. We have had, we, first of all, we started a restorative practices cohort this year, and we have nine schools that joined the cohort to, in each of the regions, to get really some deep understanding of restorative practices, developing a restorative leadership team, and really digging in, looking at their culture and climate. And the, the real focus has been on student engagement in, in that. How do we, how do we get students engaged, and how do we address their, their feelings of belonging? So, so we have eight, we have nine schools, it's the Winthrop, Snowden, Mildred, Umana, Horace Mann, which has just been an incredible experience, the Dever, and the other school that joined that was not really part of it was the Baldwin School. And all of them have shared incredibly wonderful feedback with us about the way that this work has begun to impact the culture and climate of their school. I want to share the numbers with you. So, let's see, we've had more than two hundred staff members trained in two-day trainings. So they have to have tier one, and it's a two-day training, and a tier two, two-day training. So more than two hundred have come to the Counseling Center to be trained, that's just this year so far. And this is the one that is, is just, I'm so proud of, is that nine hundred and forty-two, there have been nine hundred and forty-two requests for support across the district, requests of the team, and we have fulfilled them. And that, those supports include coaching, consultation, and PD. So next year, you know, this, this is our first full year of being able to do this. Next year, we're going to add on another nine schools and have a second cohort with that first cohort of schools being the, the senior members, so that they can, they can deal with, with the newer schools. But there really has been an incredible interest. And again, I thank the district for, for its support of this.
Thank you, I appreciate.
Mr. Tram?
Thank you. First of all, thank you for your work, thank you for the new languages, and you know, the new language regarding mediation, conflict resolution, restorative practice that are now not only endorsed, but but, you know, expressed clearly within our code of conduct. I, I personally think that that is long time overdue. The, the hearing process has always been pretty much, in, in my mind, kind of judicial type of hearing, and kids should not be subjected to that. Now, thank you for your work. I would like to particularly thank you, thank, express my thank to Dr. Samuel DePina, because I know that he shared the same thing, same, same resolution with me regarding this. And I know that your, your input is very important in the work, and making sure that those languages are there. Now, let me get to the core of my concerns. Restorative practice has always been there for quite a while. The, the root problem is that it has not implemented in the way that, that it should be professionally, collaboratively, you know, with, with, with the, the concern raised by member Barbosa when it comes to parents with, with other kind of languages. So I implore you to make sure that those concerns are now addressed. And I applaud and appreciate the fact that we now have a team of restorative specialists. The corporate problem I have is here. We're talking about mediation, we're talking about conflict resolution, we're talking about processes that are in, in supplement to the quasi-judicial process of hearing. Please make sure that mediators, conflict resolution facilitator, first of all, are they, are they school staff, teachers, administrators? I, I hope that they, they would come from a pool of impartial employees within the, you know, the, the school, and that they are trained thoroughly in the practice of mediation. Because I've seen mediation conducted well, in, you know, in my own experience, in my own work, which I have now retired from. That, that mediator, mediators who profess to be impartial are not really impartial. So, you know, these, these comes, these will become issues, particularly in dealing with students, because as we know, their grasp of social issues and society consequences are not on the same level as adults.
One minute.
Okay, so that's pretty much my concern. Please ensure that mediators, conflict resolution, and, and, and I, I, I stress that very strongly, are vehemently, adamantly practiced prior to any kind of hearing. And, and please make sure that those are professionally trained and adhere to impartiality. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Plonka Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the presentation. Me gusta mucho la parte que ustedes han presentado. Gracias por pensar en esto para nuestros estudiantes, lo que sería cómo está ahora y cómo va a ser si se aprueba el código de conducta.
I like you very much, what has been presented now, the way it is supposed to be in the future, and the way the code of conduct will be implemented if approved. And thank you very much, Madam Chair, as well, for the, for what you said.
Exactamente, y quiero hacer eco a lo que decía mi colega, el señor Trump, cuando hablaba de la justicia restaurativa bien hecha y con las personas adecuadas para que puedan hacer esa parte de la justicia restaurativa.
So restorative justice is very important, so I would like to echo what Mr. Tram said. It is very critical to have the right team to be able to implement this type of initiative, the restorative justice, as Mr. Tram said.
Entonces, mi pregunta va en ese mismo sentido. Hay un equipo, me imagino que va, hay un equipo que integra la implementación de estos remedios alternativos.
We're talking about different remedies and the alternatives to suspension. The question is, I assumed there might be a team that is in charge of implementing these alternative remedies?
Quienes, quién integran? Ya ustedes han definido quiénes van a integrar este equipo de personas que son los que van a trabajar con los estudiantes cuando tengan que ser intervenidos o sometidos o amparados bajo estos remedios, ¿quiénes son? ¿Qué es el grupo de personas que lo van a integrar?
So under these remedies that are being proposed, say, an alternative to suspension, is there a team in place that will be in charge of providing these remedies? Who are the members, or who is going to be able to implement this alternative mediation or remedies? Who's going to implement those, if there is a team in place to benefit the students?
So again, thank, thank you, Ms. Plonka Garcia, for your question. So again, since 2022, we have been, we being, it's the Operational Leader Team that I work with, and they actually provide guidance to schools on the code of conduct. Jodi and I trained that, that particular team on the law, and we had some outside counsel support. So we were versed in the law, and our team was as well. We've been working to train by regions, different schools, on what alternatives, alternatives are, and how to implement them. And again, we hold various trainings in various different ways. We might hold big trainings that include like a lot of principles, or we might hold region-based trainings with schools, and we're helping them to build out what their alternatives look like. And Jodi, working in partnership with Jodi, in terms of getting these school administrators trained, not, not restorative justice to be implemented in not a reactive way, but a very preventative way, that is to shift. I think that I agree with Mr. Tram, that in terms of before, how it was implemented was very reactive, and this is the mindset change. How do we get, how are we training them to build safe and welcoming schools and embed this into, you know, right from the beginning, their, their school culture, so tier one? So that's been the work, that's been actually the work that we've been doing from the last, from when we started implementing the code. But this law really helped us to really anchor to, like, this is non-negotiable. Now we can like use the law to say, this is something that we must have to do. In schools, it took, it took a little while to have that mindset shift, but they're embracing it, they're actually seeking out, how do I get, what are, what are some other alternatives, what can I do? And so they're, they're coming in with an open mind, and, and ready to implement as they should. So those are some of the shifts that we're seeing.
Yeah, additionally, we've, we've added in RJ Sawz into the networks for restorative practice. So if a school, for instance, needs to do circles, or if a school is looking for really building a fabric or a framework for restorative practice, that's where those coaches will come in and they'll work. And that's really, you know, to remember Tram's point, restorative justice isn't something that just happens in the moment. It's something that you build the fabric of the school and the way people think and act, especially the adults. So it takes, it takes time, but that's been part of the resource that we've been committing to it.
Y definitivamente se necesita tiempo y también personal, pero también entiendo que es importante cómo podemos involucrar a la familia. Cuando estamos tratando de tener prevención, a veces no sabemos si es un estudiante que está teniendo situación desde su casa, y cómo nosotros podemos intervenir a tiempo para ayudar con ese remedio.
So when we're talking about prevention, we have to think of the families. We have to think, how are we going to interact with the families in being able to elaborate or prevent as a prevention mechanism to create those remedies? So definitely, it's just a. So definitely, it's just a matter of time, it's a matter of taking responsibility. But how is it that we are going to involve the families so they can be proactive in the process as a prevention mechanism as well?
Y es interesante, eh, la ustedes tienen, hay un sistema ASPEN que es el sistema que utilizan, ¿verdad? Entonces, este sistema, ¿quién tiene acceso a este sistema? Y cómo eh enriquecen ese sistema? Sé que Dacia dijo que se iba borrando cada año o que se iba actualizando cada año, pero quiero saber qué tanto afecta el tener este esta información de nuestros estudiantes en un sistema como ASPEN.
So the other question that I do have, there is this platform that you did mention, which is called ASPEN. How is it that information is embedded into the system? As Ms. Desha mentioned, sometimes the information is erased, at times it is updated. How is it that the information is fed into this particular platform called ASPEN?
So ASP, I'll take the second, this question first. Um, so ASPEN is we, every school district has to have what we call a student information system. It's it's called ASPEN, that's what it is. And so we um, we, there's specific guidance that's given to schools in terms of what incidents must be reported within ASPEN. And for every incident, what action did you take? And that's why we're able to track, what are schools doing in response to the incident? That's how I can get my suspension data, that's how I can get my now alternative remedies data. It's it within that particular system. I will state that nothing really gets erased, I just want to be, you know, from that system, it it it, okay? Or unless, you know, something it becomes because of superintendent skipper uh on a on an appeal decision or something like that. So what's in ASPEN is um what we, schools are, they they know that they have to uh report because of uh what we tell them they need to, there's like a, we we train on it, we actually give them a a sheet. Um, and we actually anchor to it a lot. Um, and we monitor this um quite a, like regularly every month, we're required to by law. Um, it's also a system that uh we also have to, that we report out to Desi with. So it's a student information system, um, Ms. Polanco Garcia, just to answer that particular question, okay? And so your other question is, you know, how are we thinking through engaging families proactively um around alternative remedies? Um, and I will say that this is something um that we need to think through a little bit more because we have tried different platforms to invite families in, and we get low turnouts at those particular platforms. So we need to think of other ways in which we can engage families that, you know, that we can get, we can get them in to talk about this. Because how we've been trying before, um, you know, offering sessions, it it, we don't get a lot of um, we don't get a lot of families that way, so we just need to think through. We are able to engage them, but typically it's then more reactive. If something happens and then we're talking to them about the alternative remedies that we're going to try. So again, we really need to think through what are different ways we can get parent engagement more proactively? Because what we're doing now currently isn't working.
Thank you so much, Dacia, y parece que los 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 medios que han estado utilizando, y no sé cuáles son, y aprovecho qué medio han estado ustedes utilizando para atraer a las familias que se involucran en esto.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dacia. So the question that I do have is, what type of mechanisms have you been trying to use to get the families involved in this particular initiative? What mechanisms do you have in place?
Well, I can answer, like, we've um partnered with uh Family Community Advancements for them to do some parent outreaches, to set up some sessions for us. Um, so we've done it that way. Um, we've connected with schools um to just do some outreach to parent groups there. And so we've tried those initiatives and those proactive initiatives. And those really, they haven't been as, you know, they as many parents as we we want to bring in.
And I would just add, um, over the years, we we've had, we've seen mixed results for parent engagement, um, depending on the different topics and time of year when we do do the sessions. Um, we do also rely on our family liaisons a great deal, who contact the families and are in contact with families regularly. Uh, some families who volunteer from the parent councils, we also get them involved. We also involve Sped Pack, we also involve um other groups that currently that exist that do have parents on them. So we do have a wide range of parents, parents that we do tap into to give feedback, so. Um, but we will, we will, we 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 will continue to try to do better at that. Um, but we do have a mechanism to try at least get some feedback from parents.
Gracias, gracias por decir eso, DePina, y gracias, Dacia, por la respuesta. Yo creo que definitivamente hay mucho que hacer. Yo creo que eh los los enlaces familiares tendrían un papel muy importante. Tenemos Dilac, tenemos Ilac, tenemos eh grupos dentro del distrito que podemos aprovechar para que esta información llegue a las familias.
It is very important to to make good use of the different groups that we have. We have Dilac, we have Dilac, and I thank you very much, Ms. Dacia and Mr. DePina for the information. Given there is a lot to, there's a lot that has to be done as well, but we have to take advantage that the platforms that already exist to be able to convey this to the families such as Dilac and Ilac.
Appreciate that.
Por ejemplo, ya, por ejemplo, la la, para terminar con esto ya, eh, por ejemplo, las familias siempre llegan el primer día de escuela de los niños. Eh, dentro del paquete, yo que he sido una usuaria del sistema siempre, dentro del paquete de información que le que que le ofrecen a la familia, y el día de open house pudiera implementarse tener una mesa para que en esa mesa se informe sobre esto, que es tan importante para nuestros estudiantes, y esto yo no lo he visto.
So it is very important, this this information is crucial, this information is critical. For example, the first day of school, the families usually go there, they get involved, it is the first day. As part of the folder or the packet that they do get, any user myself, being in that particular situation as well, it would be greatly beneficial to have some type of flyer or information that being said in an open house or at the table that provides this particular information to the parents on the first day of classes, for example.
Thank you.
That's.
Thank you, Polanco Garcia. It's uh, I'm I'm smiling because Jody and I just had this conversation this morning about utilizing open house um to get some, out of some of this information. So it it's just on point, um, so thank you for that, yes.
Yeah, and I would also add, um, you know, uh, as we start the process now for the revision of the code of conduct, we we will be assessing where we reach out to and who and how, like the teams are talking about. And we will take St. Stevens up on that offer to participate. Because I know that's a uh another established group that we work with um on other topics. So hopefully we can make some connections in the rows and get some feedback to that group as well.
And I just want to emphasize what Dr. DePina said. We do have parent voice in all the things that we do. But what we're trying to do is be more proactive in terms of um, like the initiatives. So I just want to make that distinction that the the our materials are not without parent voice. We just want to make sure that we reach a larger audience of parents.
Thank you very much, everyone. Just wanted to check with um, Mr. O'Neil, did you have any questions? No, I just have one, I was um interested in hearing who was in the cohort, particularly the Baldwin School. Because often when I think about the code of conduct, I really think, many of us think mostly about the older students. And so I'm I'm interested in understanding both why they chose to to come alongside, hoping that this that this sort of um issues of prevention, of code of conduct issues, and rethinking um how we do deal with school discipline. But thinking this would be a critical place to engage parents when their kids are young, as as part of a learning process versus a dealing with a discipline kind of process. And wondering how you may, you know, adjust some of this to really encourage the parents of younger kids to begin to understand these processes early on. So they're not just in the situation that remember Barbosa talks about, where people are, you know, critically upset because something now is going on.
Absolutely, I think um Min Jen Taylor will be, she's has a lot to say about this. And um, it would be wonderful if you had an opportunity to talk to her, Chair Robinson, because her the approach is very different there than it is with the other schools. And she she was desperate to become part of the cohort. She just thought that it would really change the culture and climate there um with staff. She was more, thinking more about staff, and as we, that's how you build community, right? So um, check in with her.
I will.
Such an enthusiastic supporter, and thanks for those comments because I think they're really important.
Great. Well, thank you all for the presentation, and the um committee looks forward to taking action on this proposal in a future meeting. Um, great, is there any new business? Okay, well, that includes our business for the evening. As reminder, this is our last virtual meeting. The next school committee will take, meeting will take place in person on Wednesday, April sixteenth at six P M at the Bowling Building in Newby and Square. We will be holding hybrid meetings and folks can tune in through Boston City TV or on Zoom. As we return to in-person meetings, I'd like to remind you that we'll be starting at six P M to accommodate evening commute times. Additionally, we will continue to offer virtual testimony with two public comment periods. There's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion? Some move, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing Ms. Pavics, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins, Mr. Cadet Hernandez, Ms. Lima Barbosa.
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Tran.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil.
Yes.
Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you and good night.
Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you.